Good evening. It is 5:30. We have a full dais and I am calling this meeting to order. We are going to go through both the executive session and we are also going to take care of two work session briefings before we start our normal standard meeting at 6:30. So at this time, we will be going into executive session for item 2A. City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Codes 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate upon the acquisition of real property interests associated with the construction of wastewater treatment plant number three at 385 State Highway 304, Unit B, Bastrop, Texas 78602, and its collection systems, including all related agreements, authorizations, easements, resolutions, and associated legal actions. It is 5:31 and we are in executive session. All right, we are out of executive session and back into regular session at 5:43. Counsel, we're on the top of page two. Item number three, take any necessary or appropriate action on matters posted for consideration in the closed executive session. There will be no additional actions. And so we are moving on to item 4A, and that is the work session briefing, receive presentation on the new FEMA flood insurance study. Flood insurance rate maps, impacts on the community, and floodplain administration. And this will be presented by Allison Land, our senior planner. Ms. Land?
Good evening. All right, so I'm going to give you an overview of the new preliminary FEMA flood maps and what that means for floodplain administration in the city of Bastrop. I'll give you a brief overview. I'll give you a brief overview of why we do floodplain administration, breeze through some basic floodplain terminology just to make sure we're all on the same page, show you some of the major impact areas and changes to the flood insurance rate maps, talk briefly about community currently adopted standards, show you some resources where you can find all of this information at another time, and talk about some of the future items that we will be bringing before you. All right, so floodplain administration. The goals of floodplain administration, the primary thing is to make sure that we ensure the health, safety, and economy of the community. We want to make sure that people are safe, animals, which includes pets, which includes livestock. All of those items are protected, not endangered, and accounted for. That also includes not just the people on any given piece of property, but our community responders, any of our emergency personnel going to assist those properties in the event of flooding. Lower the amount of damaged property. I'm sure, you know, Bastrop has had a lot of declared disasters. We all know that damaged property, it's not only a burden to the homeowner, but to the community as well. And reduce economic losses. You know, when we have damage to commercial properties, that's time that they are closed, that they are not generating revenue, that they're not bringing in sales tax for the community. So the city's role is to adopt and implement ordinances that meet or exceed the National Flood Insurance Program. And I will talk a little bit more about that in a minute, but that is one of our bare minimum goals that we would like to meet. Review all development in floodplown areas and issue permits accordingly. Any of our floodplown areas, we want to make sure that any new development there meets standards, it's safe for people, animals, and our emergency responders. We coordinate with local, state, and federal officials. Water does not know administrative boundaries, right? Doesn't matter if we're in the city limits, the county, the state. So we coordinate with all the local entities around us, as well as up the chain, all the way to the federal level. We want to balance economic gain of development against the resulting increase in flood hazards. Does that development and the inherent dangers that are present meet the economic goals of the community, right? Do we really need that commercial business? Do we really need more flood area or homes in flood areas? And what are the risks? It's just a balancing act. The city also has an obligation to communicate that risk to its citizens, right? And we do that through the website, social media, various meetings, whether that's, you know, this meeting, any board and commission meeting, community meetings, all of that, and permit resources. You know, sometimes a person's first interaction is getting a permit, and at that point, they're going, that may be the first time that they ever learn they're in a floodplain. We regulate and guide development to minimize the risk, adopt standards, issue permits, you know, and that's done with ordinances, with, through permit regulation, hey, we're going to require a permit, and hey, this is what you need to show us so that we can ensure that we are meeting these standards. Plan for evacuation, public service impacts. You know, we put together plans like the hazard mitigation plan and work with the county and surrounding entities to do that, right? You know, and we also have at an operational level, all the flood readiness levels. At what point are we cleaning out the dishes, the ditches? At what point are we barricading roads? You know, all of these things at multiple levels to help mitigate risk and protect our citizens. And then we also identify mitigation opportunities, such as studies and plans. So studying Gill's Branch. What makes an impact? What pulls properties out of the flood zone? You know, do we have a comprehensive drainage strategy? You know, where can we target our resources and our assets to really make an impact? Why do we do this? Big picture, Texas floods. It's always in the top three. It's Texas, Louisiana, and Florida. Just depends on where the hurricanes hit in any given year. But it's always in the top three. Bastrop is subject to riverine and shallow flooding. You know, we all know that there's localized drainage challenges. It's why council adopted the Stormwater Drainage Manual and improved drainage standards. You know, we've had 10 locally and nine federally declared disasters in the last 10 years. Four of those are floods, and one was Hurricane Harvey. So given that half of those are flooding, it's a pretty big deal in Bastrop. We want to make sure that we are protecting our community against those hazards. NFIP, like I said, that is the National Flood Insurance Program. This is what allows any property owner to obtain flood insurance. If we don't participate in that program, nobody gets flood insurance. All right? And then we have updated maps and areas of impact. All right, so the National Flood Insurance Program. It is mandatory for communities to participate this, to participate if we want to receive federal disaster assistance. If we don't have minimally adopted standards and administer those standards, FEMA is not going to provide money because are you really protecting homeowners, property owners, and those federal resources? So they require participation before they give you funding. We do have those minimum regulatory standards adopted, and we actually have a couple of the, some of the minimum, higher than minimum standards adopted as well. Another best practice is to participate in the community rating system. And I'll give you a brief overview of that in just a minute as well. And then, no adverse impact. So when you're talking, you know, nationwide about no adverse impact, basically you're saying that any property owner cannot adversely impact their neighboring property. You cannot dump your water onto your neighbor's property or redirect flows and adversely impact them. The Texas Water Code actually makes a state law in Texas that you cannot do that. Not all states have that adopted. Texas does, which helps us out. All right, so the community rating system actually credits communities for having higher standards adopted. And what this does is gives insurance premium discounts based on, they call it classes, so they have different rate classes. So the more stringent standards you have, the higher your rate classification and the more of a discount your community is eligible for. So some basics, the flood insurance study. So we have a preliminary flood insurance study that is, was released this spring, as well as preliminary flood insurance rate maps. So your flood insurance study identifies principal flood problems. Source information for this latest one included LiDAR data, half-study that we partnered with the county on, and some other data. It describes methodology, and it also gives profiles of all these streams and rivers in town. Well, maybe not all of them, but the major ones, and provides base flood elevations.
Ms. Land, you might explain what LiDAR data is, because not everyone's familiar with that.
Yes, ma'am. So LiDAR data is flown by either drone or airplane, and it shoots thousands and thousands of little points at the ground. And that allows an image to form, similar to sonar, if you're familiar with sonar data. And it gives you a picture based on all of those points that shows what your elevation is, where structures are, where vegetation is, where the ground is. And it gives you a really good picture of what the ground looks like.
People have seen the planes, and they'll see them on that path, making several passes in this, and they've asked, so that's why I was wanting you to explain that. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. All right, so identified problem areas for Bastrop. Colorado River, it's a large watershed, part of the Highland Lake System. You know, it has a very large watershed that water flows into. And then, you know, the Highland Lake System upstream from us, series of dam networks, depending on what those dam operations do, can raise water levels here. Gill's Branch and Piney Creek, those are two of the main tributaries within the city of Bastrop going into the Colorado River. And there are no flood gauges here, so it's harder to gauge, to figure out what the frequency of flooding is and exactly where it is. But we have experienced localized flooding there, and those creeks have been studied more thoroughly than in the past. All right, flood insurance rate maps. So these are the actual maps that more people are familiar with. You know, it's the map that has the blue area and the orange area, and what's what, where's my property? Here's my street. Okay, great. These are used for flood insurance and regulatory compliance. You know, that helps cities figure out, okay, you're in this zone, so that means that your standards are ABNC, right? It also helps flood insurance carriers determine what is your risk and what is your corresponding rate. We've had updates in 1991 and 2006, and then the preliminary one was released this spring. So before we talk about areas of change, I want to make sure everybody knows what these terms are. A zones, these are previously what was known as the 100-year floodplain. FEMA has gotten rid of that terminology because it's confusing.
Because somewhat, we have a flood, and someone thinks it's going to be 99 years before they flood again. That's essentially, that's what the, right?
Right, and that is a huge misconception. Huge misconception. So it is a 1% annual chance. So that means there's a 1% chance in any given, any given year that the property may flood. So over the course of a 30-year mortgage, that relates to about 25%, which becomes a whole lot more real to people. It's like, all of a sudden, oh, wait, I have this money invested. Okay. Makes you pay attention. X zones that are shaded, those are the .2 annual chance. Previously, that was known as the 500-year. And then an X-zone unshaded is a minimal annual chance. So just to be clear, there is no property anywhere in the United States that is not in a flood zone. Okay? Just a matter of what's your chance?
That being said, it may be a Noah's flood sort of situation to get you, but you're saying there is an elevation that's above all other elevations that would cause your property to be inundated.
Right. All right, so when you were, this is a sample of the firm that covers 71 where it crosses a river in downtown, just so that everyone is, gets familiar with what it looks like. You know, that blue zone, that's your one annual chance, previously known as a 100-year floodplain. That's where we have some increased regulations. The orange, that's your .2 annual percent chance. You know, some pretty, pretty minimal regulations there. And the red hatched lines, that is the floodway. That is where water is expected to be in a flood event. You do not want development there. It will get damaged most likely and tend to lead to recurrent damages and claims. Base flood, that is the flood having a 1% chance of being equaled or exceeded in any given year. Basically, where do we expect those floodwaters to be? The base flood elevation, so this is important when you're going through the permitting process. You know, we will bring up base flood elevation, and where are you in relation to that? That is so that we can figure out where is that base flood expected to be, right? Which zone are you in, and at what elevation is it? And where are you putting your structure in relation to it? Are you going to be elevated above it? Are you going to be in it but flood-proofed, you know? And you have different options. And the regulatory floodway, this is the water channel that discharges floodwater, basically where you expect water to be in a flood. All right, there's handy-dandy picture. Normal stream channel on a wonderful day, and then your base flood elevation is above that. That's your 1% annual floodplain. Really just graphic of what we just talked about. All right, LOMAs, that is a letter of map revision. These change the zone or the floodplain or floodway designation. You know, a lot of times, especially in this area, you see these with, come in with a subdivision, and somebody is filling land, right? They're bringing in dirt, making it taller, or redirecting the water so that it's channelized over here and gives you buildable area over there. That physically changes your boundaries, okay? A Loma, which is a letter of map amendment, establishes a property location in relation to your flood hazard area. So this doesn't change the boundaries on any maps, but what it might do is change your insurance rate. You might be able to say, hey, you know what? I got an elevation certificate from a surveyor that says my home is at this elevation, and we know the base flood elevation in this area is whatever, and you could qualify for a different rate. Elevation certificates are very important. You will need one of these when you're going through the floodplain permitting process. It is obtained by a surveyor after placement of the home or after construction, and it shows where the finished floor is in relation to the ground. And that way, we can ensure that everything was installed as your permit said it would, and that it does in fact meet all of the regulatory requirements. And that can also help support any LOMAs or LOMAs that you have in process, and it can also help determine your flood insurance rate. So, areas of change. This is Gill's Branch. The areas in purple are reduction in flood hazard zone. The areas in yellow are an increase in flood hazard zone. And then your blue and your orange are just, you know, what was and what is. So as you can see, there's a lot of yellow on that map. You know, there's a little bit of purple where the special flood hazard area has decreased. But as Gill's Branch, especially on the up creek side of the railroad, you know, it's been further studied, it's been studied more detailed, and we have better information. And turns out, a lot of that information puts it in the flood hazard zone, and that 1% annual chance. Piney Creek has also changed. This has some pretty significant impacts on the north side of town. You know, we have the, the solid yellow is your 1% annual chance area. The darker yellow with the, with the black crosshatch through it, that's an increase in the .2% annual chance. And so that, that's impacting some property owners there. It also even goes across 95, where a lot of people think they're uphill, but that is still a major watershed and creek, and there are still floodways up there. So we do have minimal adopted standards, you know, to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. We do that, great. We also exceed by elevating, requiring an elevation two feet above the base flood elevation in the 1% annual chance, special flood hazard area. The Stormwater Drainage Manual, which applies to plats or large projects, you know, with this, meeting the standards there, do not let you development, develop in the 100, 1% annual flood chance area without doing a letter of map revision. So that slows down your development process to get through FEMA's regulatory process as well. But it ensures that all of your stormwater is accounted for. It ensures that that development will not be impacting development across the river, down the river, up the river. And it gives it a more comprehensive look.
Ms. Land, it might be helpful for the public to understand that since FEMA generated maps, FEMA is who generates the letter of map revision. So let's talk, because that's not something that we have total control over.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, so FEMA is the one who puts out these maps, who puts out this data, and it is, it is a federal map. It is not the city of Bastrop saying, hey, this is where that boundary is. We have no control over that. And so when you're doing a letter of map revision or map amendment, you have to go through FEMA's process because it's their map that you're changing.
And then they notify the city that they've approved it, and, because those letters come to me is one of the reasons that I, and then, and when we receive it, then everybody's on the same page in that, and we officially change the FEMA map that we have here at the city of Bastrop, because to your point of water not knowing boundaries, then FEMA has federally changed that map now. It's like an official amendment to what they had previously issued. But sometimes they get backed up, and sometimes it takes a little while, and sometimes it takes a long while. We can help people make the submission, but we're just waiting on the letters to come back with approved or not.
Right. Yes. All right, so impacts to property owners. If you were not previously in a flood hazard zone that required insurance, you may be required to have insurance now. And if you went from a minimal hazard area to a .2% area, you may want to consider it. It just kind of depends on what you feel your risk is and, and what you know your local conditions to be.
Okay, when you say you may be required, who might require a property owner to suddenly have flood insurance that didn't previously have flood insurance?
Usually if you have a mortgage and you are subject to a lending institution. So whether...
The reason you're interested in that is if you have a mortgage, your house floods, you may find that they say, we're giving you nothing because you were in, you were notified of the new flood area and you didn't get flood insurance. That's why everyone needs to be extremely interested. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, so you have a certain amount of time to get into compliance with the new maps, and if you don't, your lender may no longer cover any damages. So if your house gets taken out or is, you know, substantially damaged, you may not be able to rebuild, and you may not receive money for your damaged home, which is not a spot anyone wants to be in. Floodplain development permits are required if you are in the 1% annual chance. So, and that will be in addition to whatever your normal series of permits is. You always want to start with your floodplain permit. That's going to determine where you are, where you can be, and what elevation you are at, which may affect your porch, where you place things. It may affect your building plans. So before you start that process, start with floodplain, figure out what your requirements are. Substantial improvement, this is one that catches people off guard. So if you choose to improve your structure more than 50% of its value, you are required to come into compliance. So people are more familiar with substantial damage, where, you know, if your structure is damaged more than 50% of its appraised value, then you have to come into compliance. This also applies to anybody just regularly improving their home. So if you're planning on a substantial improvement, significant remodel, you may be required to come into compliance, or you will be required to come into compliance. And any subdivision plating under our current regulations does require a Loma through FEMA. All right, we do have resources on the city website about this. We created a city of Bastrop floodplain management website. It's on the Planning and Development Department's page. We provided some quick links to the FEMA National Hazard Layer and the Flood Map Changes Viewer. So the National Flood Hazard Layer, that is an interactive map that lets you figure out where is your property, what zone am I in? And that shows the currently effective 2006 maps. The Changes Viewer shows the preliminary data that has been issued, and it shows the areas of change. That's where those purple and yellow areas came from that I showed you earlier. We also link, you know, the Flood Damage Prevention Order in Chapter 3 of Munich Code, give you some resource, link the Hazard Mitigation Plan, link FEMA Flood Smart, that's the official site of the NFIP, and provide a guide to community map revisions, in case you're interested in that. So, in the future, we will be looking to hold some public meetings with surveyors and engineers, with citizens, and with realtors. All, each of those audiences has different interests and different focus areas. We want to make sure everybody understands how it impacts them. We are still waiting, so updating the maps is both a federal and local process. So right now, it is going through the federal notifications. When they are done with that, they'll let us know. We don't know when it's going to be, not exactly. We expect it to be late summer, early fall, which will then start the appeals process to the data, which we will facilitate. So as soon as we have information on that, we will put it out, let people know how they can go through that process, and we'll go through that process. And then, once we get through that timeline, we will look at officially adopting the preliminary FIS and firms by ordinance. All right, we can also evaluate our community rating system eligibility. That includes going through an NFIP review with our, I want to say Community Resource Officer, but that's not it. But we have a state contact that we go through that with, through our local FEMA office, and verify insurance requirements for city buildings, make sure that any of them that are in floodplains have appropriate coverage, track our number of buildings, do some documentation, and then coordinate with our CRS specialist on next steps, and then we can request a classification. And so then they will go through all of our regulations, all of our rules, all of our documentation, and figure out at what class we qualify for and what insurance premium discount our citizens will receive. Any questions?
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Just real quick, so it'll be at least fall before we'll understand our CRS.
Just real quick. So it'll be at least fall for we'll understand our CRS rating is?
Yes.
And probably after that, but it's a little too early to...
Could be, yeah. I mean, it would involve some, some deep dives into both, into all of our codes and standards, as well as just going through all of the paperwork and other documentation that feeds into it.
So the feds hand that down to the state, and then the state translates or interprets that information to the various counties and cities?
It goes from the FEMA Regional Office, then there's a state coordinator. And we can coordinate with the state coordinator, and they facilitate that communication back to the FEMA Regional Office.
And we'll be communicating that process to, to, to our citizens through any kind of public forum we can?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Really good job, Ms. Land. Counsel, any questions for Allison? One thing that I would like to city manager request is, because there's some, word's going to travel. What? I need flood insurance? So it would be very nice to have a social media post with the hot link of this is what you click on to get to the map. Because, you know, right now, you have to go like under residents, under the, so if we could just help folks get straight to the map where they can put in their address, I think that would be a helpful way. And then, depending on what they find out when they put in their address, if they have questions, they can certainly call the city. And they may be real interested in when those meetings are, if, you know, if their property is impacted. So if, if you could take care of that, I would really appreciate it. Good job, Ms. Land. Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you very much. Lots, lots to do. We all learn new acronyms. There'll be a test at the end of the meeting.
All right. Counsel, we are moving on to Item 4B. It is 6:13. We were trying to get these things done before we start. We will start our regular meeting at 6:30. I am confident we're going to be able to get 4B done. We're on to Item 4B. Receive presentation on the option to lease police vehicles. And we have Assistant Chief Stefanik with us here. Chief, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, city manager. So this evening, I would like to present to you the option for the police fleet. Our current fleet is an aging fleet in which we have 23 predominantly vehicles within the police department. Of the 23, 13 are assigned to the patrol division, four are assigned to the Criminal Investigations Division, and two are up for auction. This graph illustrates the yearly breakdown since fiscal year 2017 for maintenance for patrol vehicles. You can see that in 2020, we spent just under $63,000 on patrol maintenance. In fiscal year 2021, so far, we've spent just under $31,500 in vehicle maintenance. The types of maintenance are general maintenance, such as oil changes, and a variety of repairs that include radiator replacements and the replacements of cam shafts. As of October 1st, 2020, our patrol vehicles have been in the shop over 100 times. Forty-nine of these visits are considered general maintenance. Sixty-six of these visits were considered unforeseen maintenance. These unforeseen issues have occurred while being driven on patrol, sometimes resulting in the units being towed. Recently, we had a vehicle breakdown during a pursuit. The volume of vehicle repairs has and is affecting the current manpower within our department. Unforeseen maintenance scheduling, the requirement of dropping off and picking up vehicles, the uncertainty of downtime without vehicles waiting to be fixed or waiting on parts has placed a strain on our department personnel. The age of our patrol vehicles is a large factor that contributes to these repairs. And as with all vehicles, wear and tear. Primarily, there is a significant amount of overuse due to compensating for vehicles that are in the shop. The current seven to nine patrol vehicles are being split between 14 officers on four different shifts, and in some cases, being operated more than the normal 12 hours today and up to 24 hours a day. The same patrol vehicles are being used for special events and for security when not in use on patrol. This slide illustrates the fiscal year 2022 vehicles we are proposing to replace with leased cars rather than to purchase. You will see that the age of the vehicles ranges from five to 13 years in age. Engine hours are detrimental to our units, more so than vehicle mileage, primarily due to the demanding operational environment in which our police vehicles function. This next portion Tracy Waldron will cover. It's more of the finance stuff.
All right. She's tapping it onto the CFO.
Officer Stefanik didn't want to talk about money. Well, I wanted to talk more about the Vehicle Equipment and Replacement Fund and kind of explain how these vehicles are participating in that fund. So we have 12 of the vehicles that Officer Stefanik is referring to in the VERF. But we have 11, I think that's act, I guess that is actually 11, that are not. Which means that in order to, to, to get them participating in the VERF, we have to purchase them first. And then the lease payments will start. And so to get those 11 vehicles in the VERF fund, it's going to be an outlay. And I've approximated $610,000. So we have looked at the lease program versus continuing the path that we're taking with replacing vehicles and then starting them in the lease payments to our own replacement fund. And the lease payments are, they work out to be about the same as our future VERF lease payments. The big difference is that we would be replacing the vehicles more often, so the maintenance would be a lot less. And also, the capital outlay that would be required to actually take these 11 vehicles, purchase them, and get them paying their, their own lease payments. So that, that's kind of the financial piece of it. If you have any questions about that, she's going to take back over.
So currently, the, the schedule for replacing the current fleet with leased vehicles is for fiscal year 2022, we would anticipate replacing seven vehicles. For '23, six vehicles. Fiscal year '24, seven additional vehicles. And for '25, three vehicles. The benefits for the lease funding option. First, there would be the coordination of maintenance. It would be through the leasing company for all police fleet vehicles. And this would be the data handling and the maintenance scheduling. There would be a quicker turnaround time for us to obtain our police vehicles due to using local upfitting businesses. In the past, we've used an upfitting business in Dallas, and this presents some delays for our department. The fleet will be replaced if it's determined that there is a maintenance, maintenance issue. The, the leasing company actually would provide us with an analysis of each vehicle, and then it would be up to the city to determine if that's a path or what path they would like to take. There would be less worry about the safety and operation of an aging fleet. Hence, the vehicles would become more effective and efficient while in operation. Primarily, it would low make, lower our maintenance cost. There would also be a quicker turnover rate for diminishing vehicles with less upfront capital needed. There would be less involvement from patrol officers, taken away from their primary duties involved in picking up and managing these vehicles. And then the best thing would be there would only be one invoice generated by the, the leasing company for all the maintenance costs per month.
Did Ms. Waldron pay you to say that was the best part?
You know, I actually practiced her part, just in case she didn't show up, and I could talk about capital outlay, so. Just in case. The Enterprise Maintenance Program, the full maintenance program can be used for all vehicles if we participate in their maintenance management program. Non-pursuit vehicles, which would be our Criminal Investigative Division vehicles and our administrative vehicles, their costs can be included in the leasing program with the exclusion of brakes and tires. Enterprise would manage the maintenance program by assigning a specific individual to the lease. And they have identified at least eight providers in our area that they would work with. Enterprise would deal directly with the providers and pay the invoices, and it would cost us $6 per unit per month. The maintenance data is tracked by Enterprise and available to the city via their webpage. And also, they have a downloadable app, so an officer can log into the app and, and look at their vehicle and see that there's an oil change due in two weeks. The next steps would be for us to bring to council a resolution on July 27th to authorize, for the city manager to authorize, as I said, a resolution to authorize city manager to execute all agreements relating to the leasing program. Fiscal year 2022 proposed budget assumes capital savings from no-vehicle acquisition and lower maintenance costs with the same level of lease payments coming out of the general fund. We would order the first-year replacement vehicles with a six-month lead time. And then this would also give us the opportunity to evaluate the maintenance program for future use in other departments within the city of Bastrop. And that is it.
Counsel, do you have any questions for the chief? Mayor Protem Nelson?
What is the industry standard for life on a, on a police vehicle?
So it kind of depends. When I researched it, for the most part, it just depends on the size of the department. Ours are ran pretty hard, but typically, it's about four to five years. And currently, we have everything from five to about 13 years.
Yeah, I was shocked to see that 13-year vehicles there.
Yes, sir.
Has Enterprise given you any indication of their replacement of the leased vehicles? Will it be on a temporal basis, or will it be based on mileage, or just the maintenance of that vehicle? Or a combination thereof?
I believe it's a combination, but it would depend on what's in our agreements. And I think at this point, it would be up to the city whether it would be a four or five-year agreement.
That's right. And our, my experience with this, and this is consistent with what Chief Stefanik and CFO Waldron have been working on with Enterprise. Enterprise will make, or the potential vendor here, will make some suggestions. And they'll present to us a plan, and that's good information for us to have. But what we actually do on an annual basis moving forward is up to us in terms of that rate of replacement.
Yeah, great. I, I, this, the preventative maintenance aspect of it is, is going to be a cost saving to the city, so thank you very much.
That is the primary benefit of this.
Yes, sir. The primary benefit of this to the department would be just the, the maintenance cost lowering, and the management also.
There's, there's a short-term benefit associated with, with cash flow. We get into the leases more cheaply than we would otherwise, and that's what Ms. Waldron was saying earlier. Over, over time, that benefit kind of goes away, frankly. But what, what lasts is that maintenance benefit. We'll, we'll do a better job of it, and we'll save costs because it's managed for us.
And that maintenance benefit just turns into dependability of the unit for our police force, which I think is huge. Thank you so much, Chief Stefanik. Counsel member Crouch?
I was just wondering, what, is there a mileage requirement with the, with the lease, like in a typical public fleet?
I'm sorry, you said a model requirement?
Mileage.
Oh, mileage. As far as I know, no, sir. So typically, the analysis we did on our vehicles is we average about 12,000 miles per year on our vehicles. But as far as I know, there is not a requirement.
Counsel member Jackson?
I agree that the, the maintenance is a big part of this contract and leasing. I just had a simple question about branding or the, you know, identification of the vehicles and everything. Is that something that, how is, how is that handled? I didn't see that, or maybe I overlooked it. As far as how we will change out the vehicles from time to time with the new logos and things like that?
As far as, would we change it from what it currently is, or...
Well, I don't know what, what it is currently.
He's pretty much hoping that it doesn't say Enterprise Rental Vehicle on the side. I think that's part of the point.
No, sir. It would not say Enterprise in big, huge letters. For the most part, the only... The only thing I would like is some consistency. So everything has to stay the same and, and stay recognizable for the public.
I guess what I'm trying to ask, I'm trying to figure out, since I'm not making myself clear. How expensive is that for the, I mean, since we would be leasing and changing them out, is that just, I mean, that's just a startup cost on any new vehicle, though, to...
It is, yes, sir. So the design and the graphics on the vehicle is, is just standard. It's, it's pretty minimal compared to some of the upfitting equipment that we put on the vehicles. So whether we purchase the vehicles or release the vehicles, it would be the same, same amount.
Okay.
Is that the answer to the question?
I'll, I'll, I'll find out more later. I'm just trying to, I guess, more specifics than I didn't, I should have asked earlier, but I'll, I'll talk to you later about it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, technology's really come a long way, and it, they look really fancy, but it's really not that much money from what I've seen of past bids. All right. Counsel, any other questions for chief? Excellent job. We'll see you on the 27th. Okay, it is 6:26, and we're going to start our regular meeting at 6:30. If you are in the room and you are wanting to speak on an item and you have not filled out a form, please do so. Those forms are located in the back. And if you will please turn those in, they look like this. If you will turn them in to the city secretary, we'll make sure that we get those taken care of. And we are going to take a real quick, a three-minute recess, but we will start the regular meeting at 6:30. Here at our city council meeting, the city of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. I have, we, we have called this meeting to order. We have a full dais. And we've got, we're going to go through, we're in the middle of page two. There's some standard things that we do. We're going to say the pledge, and we're going to say some things. But I know there's some folks who are not used to being at council meetings. And we have, you've, we have ended up with, we've got kind of two big main things going on. So I want to tell people what is happening. And you heard me talking to a couple of different people. I know there are a number of you that are here for Item 13D. It is almost exactly the number of community support organizations that are here to make their annual presentation. So those organizations, and several of them, hi, you guys, good to see them, are going to have three minutes. What I am telling you is Item 10A, what you may not have realized if you didn't look at the packet, Item 10A is going to take a good, solid 30, 45 minutes. So, and if we, if we flip it to 13D with the same number of people signed up and with the presentation that the applicant's going to make and staff is going to make, that's a 30 to 45-minute presentation. So if, if you want to take a lunch break, if you want to take a dinner break, I don't believe we will be to 13D before 7:30. And if some of you choose to, you're welcome to stay. I'm not kicking anyone out. But if you do, if you want a break, I promise, we will not start 13D before 7:30. So I'm just, you're welcome to stay, but if you want to have a quick break, we can do that. So, and please, please, if you are here and you wish to speak on any item, I really need you, it was technically 6:30, but I want to make sure anybody that wants to speak gets the opportunity to speak. Please get your stuff turned in to the city secretary, and there are blanks in the back. And if we run out, our assistant city manager Rebecca Gleason will help you guys get signed up. So with that, if you are here, I would appreciate it if you would stand, and we are going to say our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, our allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
If you would please remain standing, we'll have our invocation by Chaplain Cliff Sparks. Chaplain Sparks?
Let us pray. Father God, we invite you and welcome your presence here. We thank you for being here. Or we ask that you bless everyone here that's answered your call to leading this community and serving this community. Ask that you bless them with the wisdom to continue to make the right and good decisions for the benefit of all in a spirit of peace and goodwill and harmony. And Lord, thank you for every good thing you've given us. Lord, and right now, we just thank you for this rain and the cool temperatures. And in thinking of that, we ask that you would send your divine assistance to those on the West Coast that are going through what this community did 10 years ago. Or we thank you for every good thing that you've sent down to us, for your righteousness, peace, joy in the Holy Spirit. peace, joy in the Holy Spirit. And we just bless you and honor you in Jesus' name. Amen.
You may be seated. Thank you so much, Chaplain Sparks. We appreciate you taking time to do that for us. All right, Colin, we're going to rock and roll. On my mayor's report, before I get started, I did want to share with any veterans in the audience that the Workforce Solutions is having a Veterans Summer Job Fair, and it is on July 15th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And so if you know any veterans or spouses that are looking for employment, I would encourage you to participate in that. Okay, Colin, you want to go to the next item? This is, I always do this every time, to just show you a little bit of some of the things that I've been involved with. In the upper left-hand corner, Kay Sepikas, we all know her, being associated with the museum and visitor center, and she has decided to do something different. She's going to stay in Bastrop, but she's not going to be in that role anymore. And on June 25th, they had a going away for her, and that was a picture of her at her party. It's always nice to see her. Colin, if you'll go below that, even though I'm the mayor of Bastrop, I still do fun things in other cities sometime. And one of our residents, Hannibal Lacumbay, climbed the water tower and played his trumpet. And that's a picture of me, and you can barely see Hannibal up there, but it was a great concert, it was a neat thing, and the impressive thing is that Hannibal has a fear of heights, so we all take care of things. If you go to the top in the middle, several of you watched on July 2nd, when it was Cave View's daybreak, they came to Bastrop, and they did their entire show from Bastrop, right there on the corner, and you see some behind-the-scenes pictures. And the picture of them in our E-Cab that says "Visit Bastrop" was their closing shot. So really highlighted Bastrop, and we got a lot of really nice positive feedback from that. Below that, I went to the Farm Street Opry, that is always the first Thursday of every month. That was a really good time, and if you've not joined us, I would encourage you, if you like live music, live country music, come out and see us. And in the upper right-hand corner, a couple of shots from our Patriotic Festival, I'm sure our city manager will talk about that some more, but had to highlight not only the red, white, and blue Corvettes, to remind everyone that the Corvette Invasion is this weekend, but also our wonderful new piece of fire equipment and the huge American flag that was on display as people entered the Patriotic Festival. That was always a fun thing. And then just below that, some of you know that my very sweet husband bought me a '57 Chevy for my 57th birthday, because that's what all good husbands do. And I participated in a car show at Silver Pines on June 18th, and the residents at Silver Pines Nursing Home came out, we had 18, about 18 cars out there, and it was really great to see their faces light up, and you could see, boy, the memories kicking in. I had a car like that, my grandma had, you know, it was really a fun day, and I enjoyed doing that. Okay, Colin, we can go to the next page. I always give you guys an idea of what I'm going to do, because this was a part of the regular packet. I did go to the ribbon cutting, and I got to host about 13 youngsters yesterday that asked me all kinds of questions. It was really fun, and I'll show you some pictures of that at our next council meeting. If you look at the upcoming events, I will highlight, council for you, that there is a TML Region 10 meeting on July 20th. You see a couple of ribbon cuttings. Also, on July 27th, there will be a ribbon cutting at Chick-fil-A, and that hadn't been scheduled when I put my report together. So, that's all I have for my mayor's report. And councilmember Jackson, what have you got for your councilmember report?
Just that, I think you had noted about the TML board meeting that we both attended a couple of weeks ago, I guess, or something like that, and just wanted to say that our state senator, Sarah Eckhart, was in town on July the 8th, and I had the pleasure of welcoming her to Bastrop, and she was at one of my community meetings, and it was on the first day of the special session, and so she kind of gave our group an update on what was happening with the session. And even though she'd been there all day, she still came in that evening and did a special meeting with us, and that was very helpful. That's it.
Thank you, councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Crouch?
I've been gathering a bunch of information and research on playing fields for the city, so maybe we can present that at some point in time, so we can have some cost and some ideas for some future sports playing fields. And then also, in that same realm, bike paths in the city. So I've contacted Bike Texas and Bike Austin to see what we can do to help make our city a little more bike-friendly. And so they've been real responsive with that, and then have some great ideas for the city that I can share at some point as well. That's it.
Thank you, councilmember Crouch. Mayor Protem Nelson?
Other than attending a couple of regional meetings, as well as some local meetings with our chamber, and getting dunked last Saturday, I have nothing else to report.
You are a very good sport about that, and there, I'm sure there are pictures available. Councilmember Rogers?
It was a good video, from watching you get dunked. Thank you, mayor. We do have a Main Street meeting tomorrow, so I can report back on next council meeting on what Main Street's all busy with.
Excellent. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, mayor. Nothing tonight.
All right. City manager, we are in 9C, it is yours.
Thank you, mayor. One was a team member, I think, personally going to do on the mic. And then, to take your cue on talking about the July 3 Patriotic Fest, we have a video that we're going to present here, it's just a couple minutes long. It was produced by the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Wumble's in the room, I think I saw her earlier. Thank you, Becky, for providing this, and we'll show that right now, Colin, and then we'll go from there.
The 30th annual Bastrop event was held on Saturday, July 3rd, right here in beautiful Fisherman's Park in Bastrop, Texas. Today's garden, our Run White Blue 5K Runners, where we had 337 runners who restored downtown Bastrop. One coming from outside the United States, two from other states, and tons from across Texas. At noon, we opened up so people could pull off at our Wild Wonderland. We had stilt walkers through the park, we had face painting, a petting zoo, all kinds of other children's activities, and lots of amazing food. That afternoon, we had two live acts, including the Shop Dogs and the Questor Project. We finished off the night with a patriotic event made by the Bastrop Christian Church and First Baptist Church in Bastrop. And at 9:15, people could view the most amazing fireworks in all of central Texas. The Bastrop Patriot Festival cannot be possible without amazing volunteers. We had a total of about 150 people from our membership, or the draggers, and the community at large. Then, of course, we got to thank our amazing sponsors. They included title sponsors, the city of Bastrop, Bastrop Power Light, and ATD Plus. If you missed this year's festivities, be sure to mark your calendars for Saturday, July 2nd, 2022, right back here in Fisherman's Park.
Councilmember Crouch just mentioned, I don't know if people could hear it, that was good to see the long list of sponsors. And councilmembers, if you haven't seen the, this month's chamber newsletter, Ms. Wumble spends quite a bit of time in there thanking the city of Bastrop for the city's efforts in pulling all this together. Certainly a community-wide effort with a lot of volunteers, a lot of city employees, in fact, about 240 total hours of staff time associated with helping out and being there for the event. And there was a tremendous city staff presence, police department, fire department, public works department, and BPNL. And so we'll certainly keep that up for future years. So thank you again, Chamber of Commerce, for all of that and for acknowledging the city's contribution to the effort. So council, we'll talk briefly here about upcoming council meetings. Your next regular meeting is happening in two weeks, as per normal. We've been busy for several weeks now, especially after our May 14th pre-budget planning session that we had with you preparing the annual budget. I will be making that budget proposal formally next week at this meeting. You will also hear at the next meeting the annual funding requests from our community assets, the museum, the Opera House, and the Art Center. And while they're doing that, they'll also give you their most recent quarterly report. You'll also receive quarterly reports from Visit Bastrop and the Economic Development Commission. You heard the presentation from Chief Stefanik and CFO Waldron a few minutes ago about the idea to lease police vehicles. We're going to ask you to approve that resolution that Chief Stefanik talked about earlier on July the 27th. And this next item is a state law kind of technicality. We need to officially designate the tax assessor collector to calculate our tax rate, and so we'll ask you to take care of that. We have an agreement with Bastrop County for the 911 addressing service they provide. We'll ask you to consider, assuming you approve a budget amendment that's on this evening's agenda, second reading will be on July 27th. There is a proposed municipal utility district in the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction off of FM 812, not that close to the city, but it is in the city's ETJ. It is outside of our CCN area. They would like to make a presentation to the city council, and so find that that will happen. The staff has not had much opportunity to review the details here, but we're going to have them present what they are all about at your next meeting. And another item on tonight's agenda, the mayor mentioned this earlier, is a public hearing, and the opportunity for council to consider a development agreement for that Veridian property, that 409 acres off of 969. Our schedule includes having you approve that professional services agreement. Council, you've done that sort of thing before. That's where the property owner and developer assures that they cover the cost of our review of all of the financials associated with that development. So a lot of things for July 27th, and I'll go one more meeting, your August 10th meeting. It's time for my six-month review. You will receive our third quarter report.
Mr. Hoffman, I know time flies, but that will be your one-year review.
But it's been six months since you reviewed me. So yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. It's been a great one year. Can I just go ahead and start the good vibes right now? We will ask you to do the annual review of your financial management and purchasing policies. You will, this is another gift from the state legislature in their efforts to make all of this more transparent. We need you to vote to have a meeting to set the tax rate, and we'll ask you to do that. And we have a supervisory control and data acquisition system, SCADA for short, that requires maintenance, and significantly so, and we're going to ask you to approve that contract on August 10th. And then just real quickly, from there, we've got a couple of budget workshops set aside on our strategic calendar. On Tuesday, August 17th, is workshop number one. And council, this is flexible, and we can certainly change things around, but a suggestion for that workshop day is that we talk about what you're going to hear tonight, the funding requests for community support organizations and the assets you'll hear about from next time. We'll update you from May 14th on where we are with the capital plan. I know you've got questions about fees, and we've got some updates to the comprehensive fee list, and we'll go over all that, and of course, answer any questions that you ask before that meeting. And as necessary, we can have another workshop that next day, and right now, that's just about answering your questions. And I think that's my last slide.
Thank you, city manager. City secretary, it would be helpful if we could get August 17th and 18th on our council shared calendar, so that we block that, we don't end up with that schedule.
And I spoke too soon, that actually wasn't my last slide. Colin, if you don't mind. And another item, we will put on your calendar just as soon as we confirm Visit Bastrop. We are contractually obligated to an annual joint meeting between the council and the Visit Bastrop Board, and right now, we're targeting August 23rd for that. We will confirm that, and if confirmed, and in the meantime, let us know if you've got a conflict with that evening, but that's what we're targeting right now. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. I just know, council, for all of us, the sooner it gets on our calendar, the better off we are, and I appreciate as much advanced notice as possible. All right, council, we're moving on to Item 9D, present Bastrop Independent School District Community Partner recognition. I saw Dr. Lee, oh, and there's April, both, you guys come forward.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Thank you all for having us. We were honored to be able to come here, even though you could not join us at our meeting next week, to come here, and this is maybe even better, to present this award. I am Kristi Lee, I'm the Associate Superintendent for Communications and Community Relations, and I'm here with April Lewandowski, who's our Community Engagement Coordinator, and honored to announce that the city of Bastrop is our Community Partner of the Year. And I want to tell you a little bit about why. I don't even think I have a complete list, and April's going to help me out here, but I know that city manager Hoffman, you allowed us to use the convention center for Winter Blast when we had, you know, we're struggling to find that location in the midst of COVID to still be able to give out coats and toys and all of that good stuff. Ashton LaFuentes and Rebecca Gleason participated in our human resources recruiting video so that we could find the best and the brightest teachers to come to Bastrop. Mayor, you have done countless interviews and volunteer activities, not only with Circa, but some other things that April will talk about. You've been to our board meetings when we've needed you to come and speak before the board. You all agreed to have the Bastrop Youth Advisory Council, and even though we didn't get to meet all of this year and some months, we're getting that back up and started again, and we appreciate that you allow that opportunity for our youth to have a voice here in Bastrop. Rebecca Gleason provided tote bags with a great tumbler and a personal note to every single person who was selected as Teacher of the Year this year. Now, two of those people have left, so I don't know if that's a correlation or not, but we appreciate all of the effort that was put into that. And it's been mentioned a couple of times, but we had the dunking booth at the Patriotic Festival, and that is an initiative of the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce. However, the initiative that benefits is we believe in BISD. And so I just want to say that Chief Nagy, Assistant Chief Stefanik, Assistant Chief Diarmid, Mayor Protem Nelson, city manager Paul Hoffman, all of you participated, and I don't know that all of you got dunked, I can't remember, but I think everyone got dunked at least one time. And then I also want to mention, Chief Rosales was supposed to be in the dunking tank, but I don't know if he manufactured an event that was going on on the other side of the park, but Sergeant Charles Sanford stepped in, and he got dunked a lot. And I know April has some of the things she wants to share as well.
Hi, good evening. For those of you that don't know, Mayor Schrader voluntarily agreed to participate in a cahoot with our ACE after-school students, and she was defeated in the topic of Harry Potter, and they loved it. I had students emailing me asking, is the mayor coming back? I'm sorry I missed it. I also would like to give recognition to you, to Ms. Gleason, also Ashton LaFuentes, and Chief Nagy, and several members of the library staff for serving as celebrity guest judges for our Ace Lego competition. The kids were so excited to construct different Lego challenges and to present them to you virtually, and it's important for those students because they're at home doing virtual schooling, and so to still get that community interaction, even though they're at home, was just wonderful for them. So thank you so much.
On behalf of Bastrop ISD, to the city of Bastrop, and all of you sitting here, but also all of your staff from all departments, we sincerely appreciate- also all of your staff from all departments, we sincerely appreciate this partnership. It is what makes Bastrop really special, and, and we appreciate you. And we have an award to give you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Lee. There is nothing more important. The, the school district, although it goes well outside the city limits, when people say, I go to school in Bastrop, we're all Bastrop, and you are a vital part and a vital partner, and we just so much appreciate the partnership that we have together. So thank you guys so very much. pictures, council, during my mayor's reports. All right, for anybody who has come in later, we are on item 10A. We are going to go, there's about 13 of them. We are going to hear from our, the organizations that support and do things for our citizens that the city ends up funding a portion of their overall budget. When we get done with item 10A, we are going to move to item 13D. Making sure I'm saying that right, yes. From 10A, we will move to item 13D. I will not start 13D before 7:30, and since it's 6:57, there's no chance we're going to start before 7:30. So if you want to take a little break, you're welcome to do that. I also apologize, I meant to mention this sooner. Item 13C has been pulled by the applicant. There's some things that they're still wanting to do, so if you are here for item 13C, that has been pulled, and I am so sorry. I admit, we're going to do you first. We always take care of consultants that the taxpayers are paying for their time because you guys want us to get them out of the room. So we are going to item 13A. Colin, sorry for hopping around on you. Consider action to approve ordinance number 202109 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas authorizing the issuance of the of Bastrop, Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2021 to fund water and wastewater system improvements and fence replacement in the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, levying an ad valorem tax and pledging certain surplus revenues in support of the certificates, approving an official statement, a paying agent registrar agreement, and other agreements relating to the sale and issuance of certificates, and ordaining other matters relating to the issuance of certificates, repealing all ordinance actions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date. Ms. Waldron.
It's a mouthful. Well, set this up very quickly. We've talked about this on several occasions, but this is finally the sale. The sale was done this morning. I have our financial advisor and our bond counsel here to present the results and answer any questions, but it is for the $75 million that will be for water, wastewater infrastructure, continuing to provide funding for the wastewater treatment plant and the start of the water treatment plant, and then the $700,000 for the fence replacement.
Thank you, Tracy. Mayor, Council, City Manager Dan Wegmiller with Specialized Public Finance. As, as Tracy mentioned, today is the final day. We've discussed this a couple of times, but we received bids this morning at 10:00 AM. We had the bond rating affirmed at AA, which, again, you chose to use certificates of obligation to use that higher bond rating, basically self-insure. The four bidders that submitted chose not to use bond insurance because they're relying on your AA strong tax-backed credit. For the projects, the four bidders were Fidelity Capital Markets, RW Barrett &amp; Company, Hilltop Securities, and Citigroup Capital Markets. The low bid was 2.197440%. These, these certificates go out to 2051, and it's obviously still incredibly low interest rate environment. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions on the bids that were received, but we recommend accepting Fidelity Capital Markets and the bid of 2.19744%. Bart Fowler with McCall Parkhurst, your bond counsel, is here if you have any questions regarding the ordinance.
Council, any questions for Mr. Wegmeyer? I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, I just would like to re, remind everyone that the $700,000 of it from Hunter's Crossing for this bond isn't being paid by the tax, the taxpayers is being paid by Hunter's Crossing. So I just want to make sure everybody remembered that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. There, we're helping, we're, it's like we're letting them use our credit card, but they are paying the bill. That's absolutely. All right, any further discussion? Thank you for that reminder, Councilmember Rogers. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson.
As a property owner and then Hunter's Crossing, I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes with four, four and one abstention. So we are done with item 13A. Now, we are going to item 10A. Sorry, Colin. All right, 10A, presentation from organizations applying for the fiscal year 22, community support funding. And I always, I never know if I should continue to go in alphabetical order. I know, but I think we're going to do reverse of alphabetical order, we're going to shake it up, and that, so I've made half of them mad and half of them really happy. So we're going to start with Pines and Prairie Land Trust. Do we have anyone here to present for Pines and Prairie? And just a reminder, we are truly encourage folks to keep their comments brief and to specifically emphasize how the funds benefit citizens of the City of Bastrop. Thank you. And if you please tell us your name.
Melanie Pavlis. I'm Executive Director of Pines and Prairie's Land Trust. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry. Is this the control? Okay. Okay. So we are requesting funding from the community support grant to help manage the Colorado River Refuge, and this property is 65 acres along the Colorado River in Tahitian Village Subdivision. We own and manage this property. It's free and open to the public every day. It has hiking, hike and bike trails, access to the river, and we estimate 1,000 people or so visit the property monthly. And Pines and Prairie's Land Trust is committed to protecting this property in perpetuity. There we go. The benefits that this Colorado River Refuge, or the CRR, have to the community include access to nature, access to the Colorado River. We offer free nature classes for children twice a year, with, most recently, over 60 unique students that attend, and that is growing. We support a volunteer program that hosts over 20 Bastrop citizen volunteers, and they have logged 460 volunteer hours in the past year. And more recently, we've been partnering with Bird City Bastrop to offer birding hikes at the Colorado River Refuge. I'm sorry. So we are requesting up to $25,000 from the community support program that will cover staff management of the refuge, ongoing maintenance, and two large projects. For staff time, we are asking for approximately $7,500 to support staff that will coordinate the nature lessons, our volunteer program, protecting the natural resources of the property, and repairing infrastructure and dealing with bad actors. For ongoing maintenance, we're requesting support to, for items like removing graffiti, repairing and maintaining the trails so that they are usable to the public at all times. We have seen a double in use of our trash receptacles, needing our trash service to come twice instead of one time a week. We also deal with a lot of trespass and encroachment that we've been having to deal with recently, and ongoing erosion control. And finally, we're asking for funding to support two larger projects at the preserve. One of them is a diversion dam that's located along one of our trails, and it, floodwaters will flow into the diversion dam and swirl and slow down and dump out into a wetland that eventually goes to the Colorado River. And this diversion dam gets a lot of debris from flooding events, and we just don't have the capacity to get equipment out there to free up the dam. And the benefits of having that dam are for local flood mitigation as well as downstream flood mitigation. And then the biggest project we are requesting support for is repaving one of our trail heads. Thank you. And as you can see here, it's an area that has ongoing erosion problems, and it's gotten to the point where we are going to have to get engineers involved and do a more permanent fix for it because even our trash pickup service can't get in and out of that parking area. And this is just a breakdown of the numbers that we're requesting, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, council. Any questions? Okay, we are moving on. And for everyone in the audience to know, the application that they made is in the packet, so council's reviewed all of the information that they've submitted, so that's why they're going to be just summarizing their request. In the street, hands up high, Pastor Navah.
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, City Council. We're coming today to, we're seeking support from the City Council is to continue to do in the services that we've been doing. As y'all know, Industries Hands Up High Ministry started the Open Door Soup Kitchen that used to be on Chestnut. Now, we're on Highway 95, but we're still serving Bastrop City. We're still looking to get a vehicle to pick up. Right now, we're using personal vehicles to pick up people here in the city, but we're also continuing to house not just homeless people, but people that are going through hardships in the Bastrop City as well as Bastrop County. And currently, we are working with BISD and the Catholic Youth Group. We are working on some shelters right now for homeless high school seniors, and so working with Normal Macado, Homeless Daison, and the Catholic Church Youth Group. And we recently put two disabled veterans shelters on the property as well, and so we continue to need to do upkeep on those as well. And also, there's two trailers we put on the property on the other side that we're housing larger families that are too large to go inside the shelters, and so we're working on that. And we're currently, right now, still serving bag lunches at the Methodist Church on Fridays, Calvary Episcopal Church on Thursdays, and we're looking to do another location here in the city, and that's during the day at lunchtime. And it's not just for the people that are homeless. There are people that are just in need right now, that are faced a lot of hard times through the COVID and the freeze and other things that they're going through. And so that's the whole purpose of us being here and coming and seeking support that we can continue to do the service that the Lord has put in our heart to continue to do here in Bastrop. And so that's all I can say. I could keep on talking, I talk a lot, but, but that's the main goal, is to continue to be of service to the people of Bastrop City, and that's the purpose of seeking support.
Thank you, Pastor Navah. Council, any questions? It's great to see you. Great to see you both. All right, Feed the Need.
Good evening, everybody. And thank you for hearing us all out. Again, thank you each and every year for what you do for nonprofits like ours and like all the ones represented here today. Our city is a great place to live because you guys invest in those and invest into our people, and so it's with honor and thankfulness and gratitude that we are here. So the biggest notice, change that you guys will notice is the amount of difference. So we've been consistently in that $5,000 to $8,000 range, and so that basically is paid for food. And what has happened over the past two years is we have really invested in our training. We have over 150 individual volunteers each and every single week, and to train those volunteers so that we can meet more than just the physical need of food, it takes a lot of time, it took a lot of resources. And so now, the reason we are asking for that 34 is because we have fully implemented that training program into our operations, and so it's running. So that $34,000 number has been coming in the past from our corporate funds, which we also use to help build new programs, like the gobble kit program that we've seen the past couple of years, where we did 732 families and provided them a turkey and all the fixings in this city. And so with that, we want to be able to free up those corporate funds, to be able to continue to grow those programs, and also take what we've started here in Bastrop. This was our test ground. This is where we started, and this is home, but now we're going to spread it across the country. And so any corporate funds that we can free up, we would be very appreciative of that. And so, you guys have any questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. All right, one, one close to my heart, CASA, Court Appointed Special Advocates.
Good evening. I too want to stress the importance and thank you for the funding that we have received in the past. For those who don't know me, I'm Kristy Glasser. I'm the Executive Director for CASA, and CASA is short for Court Appointed Special Advocates, and our mission is to advocate for the best interest for children and families. Now, we've added that to our mission statement, that experienced child abuse and neglect. And so over the, when I presented our packet, at that time, we have served a total of 302 children this fiscal year. We have increased that number by 10. Unfortunately, about 200 of those children are from Bastrop County alone, 70 are within the city limits of Bastrop. And so our mission is that we recruit the volunteers, we train them, and they go visit these children where they're placed. We have children who are placed all over the state of Texas. We have children who are placed in Michigan. We have a child who's now placed in Arkansas, and so wherever these children go, we go. We are the one consistent person that stays with these children from the moment that they enter the foster care system till their permanency is found. And whether that permanency be back with their parents, which is our number one goal, sometimes that doesn't happen. We stay with them and help choose their adoptive family and provide them with their forever home, and so it's important work that we do. The funding that we receive from you all has supported background checks. We, our volunteers have to go through a series of background checks, that, that, some of that funding has helped with the support of you all, also to help support our families who take in these kids. We, we have used some of the funding from you all to help support those families, granny and grandpa, aunts and uncles. We have grandparents who sometimes get five grandchildren dropped in their home, and they're on a fixed income, so now you have five children. And so we want to help, we're not the only resource. We want to be a partnership and resources that help continue to keep these children with family. If many of you have read, CPS is in crisis right now. You know, our main thing, if we have any child in crisis that's been neglected or abused, that's a crisis, but I'm going to take that a step further. We have children who are now living in the CPS offices. We have four children who are living here in the CPS office in Bastrop, and so it's not, it's not just here. We have 19, I think, the last count I heard, 19, that are living in the CPS office in Austin. And so our role that we play with that is if it's our kids, we are visiting with those kids, trying to find a friend, a family member, someone that maybe they haven't thought of before, that we could reach out and try to get those kids out of those situations and placed with, with a family or a friend. So, you know, that, that's not all this funding is for. You know, there's a variety of things that we do, mileage to go visit the kids, you know, the staff. know, the staff members that we have. And one of the things that we do realize is that as the city of Bastrop grows, we will see some of that negative growth, unfortunately, and we want to put ourselves in a position to be able to support those kids and those families. So, I appreciate you all for allowing us to present funding to you all again. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Glasser. Appreciate that. Combined Community Action?
Karen Walpole, Communications Director for Combined Community Action and Meals on Wheels rural capital area. I would like to start by thanking thanking you, Mayor, and Council members for your continued support of our programs. We serve to provide food to our elderly communities. We provide, ideally under normal circumstances, five meals a day that are hot due to COVID, of course, that changed. And so, we changed to providing frozen meals for five days a week, as well as shelf-stable meals, trying to carry over in the other times when people would need to have food. Our goal here is to, one, create independence for our elderly community, to allow them to remain in place in their homes where they know and are comfortable, to relieve any and some, hopefully, some food insecurities, any would be great, as well as to keep that contact going with that person, keep them in communication with somebody that knows them. Our volunteers get to know them and are able to know if there's something going on, if they need additional care, maybe we need to get referrals in, and just making sure that we're there as much as we can be to provide for these residents. We are requesting $8,000, and that will go directly to the cost of meals. In the city of Bastrop alone, in 2020, we served 14,000 meals to 80 clients, between the frozen, the shelf-stable. So, it's it the number grows pretty quickly. We don't necessarily know how that's going to change going forward. We're very hopeful to reopen our congregate location, which is held at the settlements, the settlement apartments. That will be our first step back to some type of normalcy for our clients, and we're really excited and looking forward to that. But that's the primary thing that that our request is for, it's directly for meals.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Children's Advocacy Center. I saw Megan, there she is.
Hi there, good evening. I was very worried that I would be called upon to go first, so I appreciate, Mayor, that you.
Anything for you, Mayor.
That you changed things up, yeah. We have. I'm glad we communicated on that. So, for those who don't know, the Children's Advocacy Center exists to provide a coordinated, family-focused approach to the epidemic of child abuse in our community. And what we strive to do is to reduce trauma, seek justice, foster healing, and cultivate empowerment for children and families. Over the past year, we've utilized the funding from the city of Bastrop to assist us in expanding our operations. Many of us know many know us for being in the little yellow house on Chestnut Street, but we've actually made a move recently, thankfully. And so, we were able to use the funding to expand our operations and the services that we're offering to children and families. In 2020, in partnership with Bastrop Police Department, we provided the following services to the residents of the city of Bastrop: 56 forensic interviews of child victims and witnesses to abuse, eight sexual assault forensic examinations for children, 437 individual child therapy sessions, 183 family therapy sessions. And in addition, we provided family advocacy services for all those parties and community outreach and education within the city of Bastrop. So, as you're aware, our community is continuing to grow, and that means the needs of the Children's Advocacy Center are continuing to grow and changing rapidly. In May of 2021, as I said, we were able to make the move to a new building, and through that move, we were able to accomplish a few things that were badly needed. We expanded our forensic interviewing capabilities by adding an additional forensic interview and observation suite. We grew our onsite medical examination program. We actually have a sexual assault nurse examiner that is in the office weekly staffing that room. We created a family advocacy pantry that has food, clothing, and household essentials for families. And we launched our onsite therapeutic wing, where we offer trauma-focused individual and family therapy right here in the city of Bastrop. So, unfortunately, as with many people, the financial fallout from the COVID-19 crisis has resulted in a drop in state and federal level grants funding for us at a time when our community is growing faster than ever and the need for services is at its most critical. We've remained open and actually expanded operations throughout the crisis, and we expect that that expansion is going to need to continue. Currently, we have 70-plus child victims of abuse and trauma awaiting therapeutic care on our waitlist. And so, we have the space now to provide critical services to the to those children and their families, but we need the workforce to staff it. So, the funding we're seeking from the city of Bastrop would be utilized specifically to fund those critical therapy services, and an increase in our community funding would improve our ability to expand into our new space and reduce those wait times for therapy. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. You did great.
Thanks.
All right, Council, any questions? All right. Okay, Bastrop Pregnancy Resource Center. Hi.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Katina White-Higgins, and I am the Director of Development for the Bastrop Pregnancy Resource Center. I'll dive right in. With this year's funding from the city of Bastrop, the Bastrop Pregnancy Resource Center was able to help many non-clients during the pandemic's peak by giving out diapers, wipes, and formula. We gave out 14 car seats to clients and individuals with emergent needs. From October 1st, 2020 to present, we've had 91 unique clients and with 259 total client visits. Out of those numbers, the unique clients seen within the Bastrop City limits were 18 and the total with a total of 48 visits. And so, with received grant funds beginning in the city of Bastrop's fiscal year of 10-1 up until today, we've purchased a computer for showing client classes, a subscription for video conferencing with the clients so that they can utilize our services from home in the classes. Pregnancy tests, diapers, car seats, strollers, bottle sets, educational literature, and storage racks for clothing that we get donated in. The overhead portion was allowed the overhead portion that was allowed was spent on the liability insurance for our organization. The remainder of funds will be spent on the yearly digital subscriptions for the educational classes for our clients and additional materials such as the car seats, cribs, and et cetera. Our challenges this year have been that, you know, keeping the bigger items in stock, like the baby beds, and those are necessities, especially when dealing with people who are having to, you know, their babies sleep on the floor, you know, there are different circumstances that that make that a very important item. And so, our upcoming plans are to purchase a travel projector for off-site classes and presentations so that we can be in the schools and we can go and do presentations, and they're more effective that way. And to purchase to also purchase four iPad tablets to present online curriculum to our clients. We plan to continue to offer digital education and support to our clients so that they so we can continue to develop our clients spiritually and parentally, of course. We want to also increase availability of larger material items, like I said before, like the baby beds and things like that, and the strollers, because those are important too, especially for our parents who have to walk everywhere. That makes a big difference to have a stroller. So, we also plan to add more streams to our online educational classes so that we increase the number of clients that we can see every day, because of course, with the limited number, you know, we only can see so many a day, and so, this would help us. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. A great organization. All right, Bastrop County Women's Shelter, but most of us call it the Family Crisis Center. Sherri?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and thank you for the opportunity to be here and present our funding request, as well as for the many forms of support the city has provided to our agency over the years. As you're aware, Family Crisis Center exists to address the issues of domestic violence, sexual assault, dating violence, and stalking. You know, it's unfortunate fact, and as much as we'd like to believe these societal ills don't occur in our community, it's just not true. And needless to say, just like every individual business and entity, the past year and the pandemic has been and brought about many challenges for our community as well as for the center. But thanks to the fortitude and commitment of our incredible staff, we were able to quickly and frequently adapt to the ever-changing protocols, and we're able to provide these essential and vital services and keep them available 24/7 to those in need of crisis intervention, emergency shelter, and our other critical core services. You know, funding from the city helps support our receptionists, who actually see every person that comes in the front door, and those receptionists do, you know, the initial screening and take the hotline calls. And so, not only does that city funding help support their salaries, but that funding is also used as match for our Governor's Office Criminal Justice Division, VOCA grant. And so, in many ways, that city funding just, you know, it's all those puzzle pieces coming together that are so important. I've provided a handout this evening because I wanted to share with you what our services look like, and I left it on your desk during the breaks. Thank you, Mayor. And it shows a two-year comparison, and I thought that was so vital because FY19 was what we would have called a normal year, and this reflects FY19 as well as FY20. And so, certain areas of our we had to really adapt certain areas of our service. And most of the things listed on here are unique client counts, but I also at the bottom give you a reflection of how those services were unique to city of Bastrop residents for both FY19 and FY20. And you'll see that for city of Bastrop, it didn't change that drastically because we were here and we were doing those services. The emergency shelter never shut down. Our our emergency 24-hour availability was always there. So, for victims of violence and abuse, we know that any external factors that add stress, isolation, and financial strain can create circumstances that further compromise victim safety and their sustainability. This pandemic had all of those elements and far more. During the stay-at-home orders and social distancing situations, the risk to victims of domestic violence were definitely on the rise. Abuse is about power and control, and domestic violence and other abuse perpetrators frequently use isolation, control, and control to intimidate and facilitate their abuse. And so, this pandemic was the perfect ground nurturing for that. Our direct service staff witnessed and can attest to the escalation of violence during this time and these increased stressors. So, tonight, as you snuggle into the comfort of your own bed in the safety of your own home, please think of the 25 individuals that are staying in our shelter tonight. They do have a safe place tonight because of your support of our agency. And please consider our staff, who I call my heroes, they're busy ensuring that these services remain available 24/7 for those who need them, and I thank you for that. And I'd be happy to address any questions about our agency, about our application, or anything in general. And I also invite you to call me sometime. I'd love to give you a tour of our main office, our shelter, our transitional housing program, any of the facilities left for you to see them. Many of you've probably seen our thrift store, so that is such a vital part of our agency as well.
Yeah, the the facilities that you provide are really impressive. I've enjoyed the time that for the situation that you're in, I appreciate the hard work it takes to take care of that. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery, Ms. Lowe. Good to see you, Sheila.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, and City Manager. Thank you all for having me here this evening on behalf of the Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery Team. So, 2020 and 2021 has been quite different for a long-term recovery disaster organization. You would not think that we would be participating in a public health crisis, but we did. And we, with other partners that are in this room, were able to step up and help our community quite well, if I may say so myself. We did a great job, and I appreciate the the opportunities that we've been given to assist with helping the city of Bastrop respond to some of those needs as well. So, recently, we wrapped up our winter storm assistance along with our COVID-19 financial assistance to families, with the exception of our COVID-19 mortgage assistance that just started last month, that's going to be able to help Bastrop County households that have 80% or are at 80% or less of the area medium income. We're going to be able to help them with six months of mortgage assistance, with only one of those months having to be current or a future payment. So, that's going to be a big help to some of our residents here in the county that have have suffered. Since last year, this time, we served as Bastrop County's hotline for COVID-19, and we took over a little over 4,200 calls in from March 2020 to 20 March 2021. 454 of those calls from were from inside the the city limits. So, those calls, we we tracked each one from the different areas in the county. So, we took about 454 from the city of Bastrop, and during this grant period, we took in 228. We didn't really keep track of the calls that we got for vaccines because that was being handled by another organization, so we were just trying to get people routed to where they needed to be. During last year, we were able to do some great things with the partners that we had. One of them was to make sure that our seniors were not going out into public places when they didn't need to. We were able to partner with Combined Community Action in their Meals on Wheels program and provide deliveries for those families, so to assist with the volunteers there. And then also with the Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry, when we had seniors that called in on the hotline that needed food, we were able to hook them up with the food pantry, and they got them the meals or the groceries, and we provided the volunteers for that. For our primary purpose, and what we ended up doing is because this is different for the Long-Term Recovery Team, we ended up changing our mission to include assistance with public health. So, I'm going to break it down real quick with these numbers. We were able for winter storm, we assisted 32 families with household repairs, whether it was plumbing, leaks, roof repairs within the city of Bastrop. We also helped 21 families during the winter storm with utility assistance. That was seven with utility assistance, nine with home and plumbing repairs, and five with rental assistance. And we even had one family that we assisted with pending Harvey repairs. So, we 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 kind of reached back for that. And then, as I stated, we are doing the mortgage assistance program, and by our numbers working with CAPCOG, we're probably going to have 15% of those are going to be coming from the city of Bastrop, and I'll report on that as well. If I can take a minute real quick, just to remind you all that this is the 10-year anniversary of the Bastrop County Complex Fires. September 4th, we're going to be at the Bastrop Convention Center. It's a community event, and we're asking everyone to come out and to support the families that were affected and to also reflect on our resiliency in the county. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Sheila. Sheila and I were talking daily during COVID because I would read the call center, and we would be sharing information to make sure we could get folks the answer. And at a really stressful time, you and your volunteers provided some clarity and assurance, and I just really appreciate the extra efforts with that.
And lots of lots of answers about when the dog park was going to open back up.
Yes, ma'am. That was that was a high point for me last year. Okay, Bastrop County First Responders, Scooter, I saw you back there, Mr. Green.
All right. Good evening. Appreciate the time, and I'll be brief and respect everybody else's time here. My name is James Green. I go by Scooter. I'm with Bastrop County First Responders. We're a registered first responder organization with the Department of State Health Services that works in conjunction with any contracted EMS provider, and a lot of times, we respond along with them and often get there before they get, and we initiate patient care. We've been providing service to the citizens of Bastrop and the city of Bastrop as well as the county since 1988, and historically, we do about 2,000 responses a year. Again, like most organizations, 2020's numbers are a little bit off kilter. And we respond to emergency incidents within the city as well as the county with our volunteers, and we also work with in conjunction with the Bastrop Fire Department, providing an umbrella organization for them to operate their medical standby or their medical first response as well. Additionally, we do medical standbys here in the city around the county, most notably recently, the summer in the city, we participated and provided medical standby services as well as the Patriotic Festival and homecoming and rodeos and all that other stuff. Additionally, we provide a very low-cost EMT training option that we do classes typically, we do about two classes a year, and graduated in the neighborhood of about 25 students that go on to work and volunteer. 25 students that go on to work and volunteer with our organization here. Historically, in 2018, we received funding from this particular program that purchased some AEDs and radios. In 2020, we obtained our mobile medical unit, which we got it in service right as COVID went into play, and it got deployed at Mayfest Park for four months and operated our COVID testing site. So it was a fantastic use and return on investment there, let the operations continue out there for that prolonged period of time. And last year, we obtained, we used the funding to purchase some AEDs. This year's needs assessment, we determined that we need to replace, a direct replacement of five broken radios that are still in our possession that are greater than 12 years old and are no longer supported by Motorola. And we've got a little bit of a special this year. We're getting $400 of a buyback program that's a special right now that we're going to take advantage of. So that funding would come to $17,277.10. And this is a multi-year capital-type acquisition, not just an operational expense. Any questions?
Really appreciate all the good work that you guys do. Thanks, Scooter. Scooter's one of those people that you really hope you don't ever need him, but when you need him, you are really glad to see him. Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry. There she is.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Taylor Andre. I'm the Program Manager at the Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry, and I'm presenting on behalf of our Executive Director, Ms. Tricia Silva. So the mission of the Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry is to serve Bastrop County residents going through periods of transition by providing emergency food assistance, education, and support. We're able to meet this mission by provoking programs such as our Emergency Food Assistance Program, our Brown Bag Program, our Open Arms Program, NIBELS, and we are in Phase One of transitioning back to be able to provide educational workshops, financial classes, and our Fresh Food for Families Program. All the funds requested would be to help support these programs. I would like to share with you just a few of our many accomplishments during the pandemic of last year. So just through our Emergency Assistance Program alone, the pantry was able to serve 2,761 individuals, distributing a total of 174,455 pounds of food. With the partnership with Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery Team, we were able to work with volunteers to also provide 140 seniors who were either told by their physicians to stay home or who just were terrified of going out, which is completely understandable. But we were able to provide those individuals with fresh produce, whole grains, water, and non-perishable items. We were also able to expand our NIBELS program during that time and have included email elementary now to our list that we're serving, bringing our total to serving 168 students last year and providing them with over 23,960 pounds of food. In the past, Central Texas Food Bank that we partner with as well has recognized our Executive Director, Ms. Tricia Silva, and our organization as the Central Food Pantry Partner of the Year for our innovative approach of being a hunger buster in the community. Well, last year, they presented her with the Hunger Heroes Award for all the hard work that was put forth during the pandemic. So here at BCFP, we believe that it's so important to go above and beyond than just simply handing out food. We like to address the issues that bring the residents to our door by providing them with resources, information, and referrals, and kind of bridging the gap between the services. With that, we use a model that is, has a holistic approach in serving our clients, and we truly appreciate all of your support in order to help us continue to do the work that we've done. We are very grateful to have been able to be of service to the community since 1987 and truly grateful for your support. It's very critical to keeping our doors open and keeping our pantry shelves stocked. Thank you.
Great job. We'll tell Tricia you did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, you'll remember that often our city staff helps with the NIBELS program and stuff in those backpacks so that the kids that have food insecurity are able to have meals on the weekends. That's the NIBELS program. All right. Bastrop County Child Welfare Board. Hi, Judge.
We're requesting the same amount as last year, but the need has actually gone up a whole lot. So let me just sort of explain the contradiction there, apparently. Last year, it's always kind of confusing to talk about fiscal year versus calendar year. So we are in our second year fiscal year of funding from the city council. The first year, we spent $2,155 on 15 children who were removed from within the city limits. Most of the kids that we help are removed from within the city limits. Some of them are also placed within the city limits, but that's kind of a rarity. And actually, I should stop for just a second and just say that what we do is provide help to families who are starting out with foster kids for startup needs. The state does not provide these kinds of things. So when a child is removed from a home and is placed with a family, there are lots of initial expenses, some of which are not common, but some of which are very common. Like, for instance, if a child is removed too quickly and they can't grab a lot of clothes, they have to just get some clothes to get going. If there is not a bed there, the bed has to be provided, or bedding has to be provided. So we kind of fit within a network of support organizations, some of which you've already heard from tonight, CASA, the Child Advocacy Center. Those are groups that serve some of these same kids. What we do is we provide startup funds for kids who are removed and placed with a relative, which is called kinship care. So we don't provide funds to foster kids. We provide funds to kinship care kids, and that's, like I said, with a relative. And either the relatives have to dip into their own pockets and pay for this, or they come to us and ask for help. And so that's the role that we play. It's an organization that's created by the Commissioners Court, so we're quasi-governmental. We're not nonprofit. All the people on Child Welfare Board are appointed by the Commissioners Court. So having said all that, this past fiscal year, the one that we're in right now, through three quarters, we have served 22 kids versus 15 the prior complete year at $3,700. So we've actually spent not quite twice as much money this fiscal year for three calendar quarter, for three quarters as we did all of last year. So the need has clearly gone up, and I can explain why that is in a second, but let me tell you why we're not asking for more money than we did last year, besides the fact that the mayor counsel us to take that approach. We have actually had quite a lot of fundraising in the last 12 months. I'm not quite sure how to explain it. Our private funding from people who want to contribute has actually gone up during the pandemic. Go figure. So we're actually in better shape than we thought we would be at this time last year because our private funding has been going down sort of steadily. So the pandemic has kind of given us new life. We are going to be looking at this amount of money for the next year, and we feel like it's going to meet the need that is driving this increase in Bastrop and elsewhere. And I'll just tell you what that is very quickly. As you heard tonight, there's a crisis going on with CPS. Kids are sleeping in the offices, and the foster care system is focusing more and more on placing kids with relatives. So kinship care is becoming a much bigger priority than it has been in the past, which means there are more kids needing startup funds. So that's the reason why this is happening. Okay. Any questions?
How much does Commissioners Court give you?
$3,500. And we've gotten funding from Smithville. We've gotten funding from some nonprofit organizations that fund these kinds of groups, like, for instance, Born Again Emporium. Since I got on the Child Welfare Board, our funding from sort of reliable sources like y'all has really gone up. So we're actually in better financial shape than we've ever been. And that's partly because you've helped us and because Smithville's helping us. The one holdout so far is Elgin, but we're keeping our fingers crossed that maybe this year that'll be different. But certainly, the level of support that you've provided to us is more than commensurate with the need here in Bastrop. And unfortunately, it's probably just going to get worse because of what I just said. More and more kids are getting placed with relatives.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay. And good news for everyone, the last organization, Austin Habitat for Humanity. Good to see you.
All right. Yeah, great to see y'all in person again after a long time, familiar faces and some new ones. And thank you for the opportunity to come down here and speak. I represent the Austin Habitat for Humanity Home Repair Program. In addition to creating new homeownership and some of the development we've done here in your city, we also act to preserve existing homeowners. And we do that by doing construction triage for major life and safety, accessibility, code compliance, and things that left untreated would give rise to a hazard or cause the structure to continue to deteriorate. Last year, we were able to serve a family who lives here in the central city area after being displaced themselves by the Bastrop complex. And we were able to bolster the funding that we received from the City of Bastrop by $3,000 in replacing a very leaky, heat inefficient, 28-square roof and doing an accessibility modification to the owner, converting a tub to a shower with grab bars and stability features so that they can age in place. And in addition, we returned after some freeze issues to do some plumbing on that house with independent funds of Austin Habitat for Humanity. Which just illustrates something that we do with any funds that we're stewards of, is we provide wraparound services, partnering with either other resources, creating referrals to get additional assistance that may be beyond our scope of practice, such as the food bank, adult protective services, and whatever the case may be, or groups like Combined Community Action for weatherization. We also will use volunteers to come out and put some icing on the cake, replace some siding, paint the house, and we've done that for some Bastrop community funding recipients here in your city. So we really appreciate the opportunity to ask for these funds again, and we strive to serve your community again in 2022.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate all of the organizations that came, and I know you have already worked a really long day, and you are going to hurt no one's feelings if you guys leave. So have a wonderful, safe evening, and we appreciate both the application. And we have a community support meeting this week, so I know I'll be visiting with you guys later on. Counsel, are you doing okay? Oh, we need a bio break. It is 7:47, and we're going to take a really quick recess, and we will come back and start on Item 13D. We are in recess at 7:... Okay, we're going to get started again. It is 7:52, and we are back in session. We are on Item 13D. Hold public hearing and consider action. You guys okay?
Yes.
Okay. Hold public hearing and consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2021 65 of Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving a development agreement between the City of Bastrop, a home-rule city, and Continental Homes of Texas LP, a Texas limited partnership for 399.9 plus or minus acres of land out of the Nancy Blakely survey abstract 98 to the west of FM 969. Located within the City of Bastrop extraterritorial jurisdiction as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for appealing cause, and establishing an effective date. So Ms. Bills is going to make a presentation, and then we will open the public hearing, and I have, and Madam Secretary, I think you gave me two 16s. So I think we're, we go to 18. So we have 18 people signed up to speak, and I will be calling you in the order that you signed up. Ms. Bills.
Good evening. So today, we're here to talk about a development agreement on this tract, as shown in the slide. It's a little under 400-acre tract just south of the colony, west of FM 969. This has previously come before city council. It came back in December under the name New Communities with one kind of a development concept. Since then, it's come back in March for a public improvement district creation. And at this point, all we've done is create that boundary, which is, this is the boundary that you see for the Pid District. So just a kind of a summary of the area. So the applicant in this case is Continental Homes of Texas. The area is located within our statutory ETJ. That's the one-mile ETJ around the city limits. And on our future land use plan, it has this area designated as neighborhood residential. So what we're here to talk about tonight is the development agreement. So this development agreement, since it's in our ETJ, and one of the things, probably the biggest consideration is the utility agreement within this development agreement. This is, this area is within the Bastrop wastewater CCN, so this is the area that the city can serve wastewater to. We have obviously a new wastewater treatment plant going in south of this, so this would be an ideal customer for the city. It is in the Aqua Water CCN, but the city several years ago executed an agreement with Aqua that as long as we're serving sewer to development, we are able to be either a wholesale or, in this case, a retail water provider for the development. So that is something we're, that's in our agreement, that we will be the water provider through Aqua. One of the other considerations in here is that the city has requested the option to annex this property into the city limits at a point which, after the final, the final plot has been recorded, at a time that it's financially feasible for the city. So when it's in the city's best interest to annex that in after the final plot has been recorded. And the other big thing is this is established as development standards that are based on the B-3 codes. There is no zoning on this property because it's in the ETJ. So these development standards say what the process will be, what standards they'll be reviewed under, until which time they're annexed into the city. So this before you is the concept plan. So this is one of the exhibits in the agreement. It's Exhibit F. This shows a layout of their parks and open space, their single, what they're calling single-family, and then their core commercial district. And they patterned these development types, is what they call them, after our B-3 code place types, so that they kind of equate to our P-1, P-3, and P-5 districts, and use a lot of the same standards. So one of the things you'll also see is the road network throughout here. So in our ETJ, one of our main requirements in the ETJ is that you follow our 720-block grid, which is our farm lot grid. What this development has done is they keep that grid for, you can see along the main pr, wow, me and the clicker don't always get along. Okay, clicker is not like me tonight. But you can see along the southern boundary of the property, that is going to be the future extension of Blakely Lane. So that is, they're responsible for the construction of half of that road. And you can see that they've provided the distances between those road connections at roughly a 700-block length. So they'll have those main connections to the main thoroughfares, and then within the subdivision, they'll be following. The block structure is smaller than the farm lots, but a little bigger than the building blocks. But there are cases where you can see they have a lot of connectivity for pedestrians into all those parks and open space. And one of the other things that has some discussion in our master thoroughfare plan, we showed a major, or multimodal street is what we call it on our thoroughfare plan coming through and connecting to Woodlands Drive. With this plan, you see that major multimodal road coming in and actually going south into what would have been, that used to be called FM 20. It's just, it's a connector road from 71 on our master transportation plan. And then they have a larger road through the development that you can see comes, clicker still, oh, so close, that circles around and then comes back down and connects into Blakely Lane. So that major, that major road is throughout the development, but the connection to Woodlands Drive is actually a local residential connection street. It's not one of the major connections. So recognizing the Woodlands Drive is a residential street. It connects to a residential street and not a main thoroughfare. So just kind of a breakdown of their land uses as they are in the development agreement. They have 87, almost 88 acres of parks and open space. They have 265 acres of single-family. They'll have 12.4 acres of core, which is a commercial up at the front towards 969 for a total, and then they'll have 35 acres that get dedicated as right-of-ways. So within the development standards, this is developing within the ETJ, the development standards, as I said, they mirror our codes with the 720-block grid and really meeting those intents of our code to be multimodal, pedestrian-friendly, and to also recognize the geography of the area. This area has several floodplains and waterways that cut through the property. And you'll see that on the concept plan, that they've worked those areas into the concept plan to be... those intents of our code to be multimodal, pedestrian-friendly, and to also recognize the geography of the area. This area has several floodplains and waterways that cut through the property, and you'll see that on the concept plan, that they've worked those areas into the concept plan to be parks and open space, to deal with that drainage, and make a series of parks throughout the neighborhood that also take into account the geography. So some of the blocks do break up because of those geographic challenges. One of the other goals is they're doing wooded strips along the roads to make... This is a very wooded property, so they're wanting to preserve as many trees as they can, and going to work that into their public improvement plans. So the posted packet, there was a slight change in the draft that we have tonight. We had some random highlights in the... You'll probably see in the development standards. Those were removed, and then there was one line that was a big yellow highlight that still needed a tweak on wording, and it was revolving around when you don't have to do a site plan, and this mirrors our code, that you don't have to do a site plan, a formal site plan, when it's exempt in our international residential code. So that's the only thing that changed from the version in your packet. So at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at the end of May, there were three speakers at the meeting. All three were against, and they stated concerns, a lot of concerns about drainage was a main concern, the connectivity to Woodland Drive, and then also just disturbing the natural environment that's in that area. Also, before P&amp;Z, and then since, we've received a total of two comments, four 10 against, and two that just requested more information. So at the P&amp;Z meeting, we did talk about those concerns about drainage, that this will be reviewed under the city's stormwater drainage manual. We'll see on our next steps all the different plans we get to review. The connectivity to Woodlands Drive, we think that we've... You know, connectivity is a big concern in and out of the city limits. So that connection is needed, but we are cognizant of making sure that's a neighborhood connection. And then disturbing the environment, the developers with the street grid are trying to recognize the geography and the existing trees within the development. So at P&amp;Z, the commission voted 6 to 1 to recommend approval of the concept plan. The concept plan is the main thing they looked at because that's kind of their purview. They look at land use, they look at subdivision regs, and these are things that will come back to them in the future. One of the things at P&amp;Z that's different between that meeting and this meeting, originally, you can see in the concept plan, kind of a bigger tract off to the west there. They'd originally called that an innovation tract, and we're still kind of in the works to possibly do something with the original New Communities project. That since then, they have taken that out, so all of this area is within the agreement and will be following the development standards that are established in this development agreement. Oh, going too far. Going in the wrong direction. So next steps, and this was in the report, but it was listed wrong. So what's coming back at the next meeting is the PID financing agreement. So this is one of the steps, and we've established the PID boundaries. The next is establishing the PID financing agreement. So that'll come on July 27, and then add a date to be determined. The next step is the service and assessment plan. So you see that a lot with Hunter's Crossing. These are the different steps. So that's the service and assessment plan is what actually determines the amount of money that will be able to be bonded for the project. And that's something that we've already... We've been reviewing the PID financing agreement with our consultants. They think that looks good, and their recommendation is that the city actually write the service and assessment plan. So we will discuss that at the next meeting. Development process-wise, so right now, we have some public improvement plans that we're reviewing for the major tract improvements, which are mainly wastewater improvements because they're trying to... That's kind of the big lead time thing for a development of this size especially, is getting those major wastewater improvements to connect into our system. So they're working on that now. That's under review. The next step for their first section is going to be a preliminary drainage plan, preliminary infrastructure plan, then the preliminary plat, which will come back before P&amp;Z. And then they'll have the final drainage plans, public improvement plans, the public improvement plan agreement that'll come back to City Council, and then the final plat that goes back to P&amp;Z after that. So that's kind of the steps. And then for any of the commercial development or anything that's not covered in the international residential code, we'll have site development plans, and then everything will go through our permitting process. So everything in this development will go through the building permit process. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Bills. Good overview. Counsel, any questions for Ms.?
And the developer is here if you have questions of them as well.
Okay. Ms. Bills, I did... In part of the exhibits, I just... I wanted to make sure I'm real clear on this. Any... If you go back, probably the concept plan is where we're going to spend a lot of time. Where there's a 60-foot right-of-way, I'm given... Councilmember Crouch is going to be interested in this. I see that there are two bike lanes as a part of this street cross-section.
Yes.
And that, since that is a part of the planning section, they are committing that that's what they're going to do within a 60-foot right-of-way.
That's their cross-section that's being adopted as their development standard.
Okay. And then what they're calling an avenue street that has an 80-foot right-of-way has a 10-foot sidewalk on one side.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so the 80-foot is that big one that comes in off 969 and then curves down back towards 71. And then the 60-foot one with the bike lanes is kind of the loop part in the middle, and then also comes then back around, back down to Blakely Lane. So the bigger streets that connect all the different neighborhoods.
Okay. And then the other thing that I wanted to make sure everybody was real clear, that we're all reading the concept plan the same way, is the highlighted, the solid white lines within the PID boundaries, those are streets. This is a concept plan, so it's not a final plat, but those are streets that will be built by the developer.
Yes.
And the streets that connect to that that are... Have dashed gray around them, those are streets that will be developed when that property is developed. And I had a conversation with someone, and I wanted to make sure we were real clear for the public, because you've used an aerial view, a satellite view, for a considerable portion that surrounds it, but you did not use the aerial view to the north. And it is my understanding that those are final plats.
Yes.
And so where there is a dashed line coming down out of the final plat from the north, which I believe is a portion of the Colony, the reason that this concept plan is lining up is because those streets will exist. So we're trying to make sure from a plat-to-plat survey standpoint, there's connection for the system. Although this doesn't look like a standard grid system, this is compliant with our transportation plan, and it's the point of making sure that we're not building streets that don't line up with things that we have already committed to.
Yes.
Is that... Am I on the right page?
So the area to the north, within the white area, those are street alignments that we already know because they are in a plat that we've either have under review or have already recorded. I will say, some of the dashed lines that go off to the side, we don't have those plats yet, but those are... That north-south road is not in the Colony's agreement. So again, this is a concept plan, so some of these lines may change, especially then in some of the dashed lines to the south. Those are kind of perspective based off of our master transportation plan. But those alignments could change, given development situations and road connections with Tech Dot and things like that, so.
Right. But with the intersection of 20 and 71, that, to your point, if Tech Dot does some improvements to that intersection, it may adjust a little bit, but they're likely to not pick up 20 and put it substantially distant. And then it seems to the far west that we're connecting at a median break, again, knowing that that could potentially be a lighted signal or something at some point.
Yeah. So the developers kind of use their best knowledge they had today of creating a grid, but again, they can only control what's inside their developments.
And the connection point at 969, what does that align to to the east of 969?
That aligns to...
Isn't that?
Doesn't... I don't think there's anything there yet.
So that is a concept plan, but they pretty much picked the center of their property.
Yeah, because Blakely Lane is what is to the south.
Okay.
Yeah, and there may be a driveway that it lines up with, but... And I will say that connection is going to go through Tech Dot to determine that exact...
That exact location.
That exact location.
They'll get some assistance from Tech Dot on that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Bills? As she mentioned, the applicants here, do you have any questions for the applicant? Mayor Protem Nelson, you had made an inquiry that I want to review. Mr. Borquez, it is our understanding that your office has reviewed the development agreement that is in our packet.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. All right. We are going to... I am officially opening the public hearing. We have 18 people signed up to speak. I will call you in the order that you have signed up. I would like for you... What we do when we have our public hearing is you're going to state your name, your address, and then my trusty timekeeper is going to give you three minutes to address counsel, and we would encourage you to be respectful of each other's time. All right. The first person that we have signed up to speak, I'm pretty sure, yes, wished to speak, is Sherri Gaines Taylor. Is Ms. Taylor here? All right. We're going to move on. If she comes in, we'll... Somebody let me know. Next person signed up to speak is Brandon and Jessica Camp. Mr. Camp? Thank you.
My name is Brandon Camp. The address is 246 Woodlands Drive. Appreciate it, Mayor, City Manager, and Counsel. We're probably the newest residents to this street in Woodlands and moving in on November. We pride ourselves on being strong advocates for the state of Texas. My wife and I both work for Department of Family Protective Services. We're active members with the Texas Wildlife Association, and this development plan is kind of what's causing a conundrum in our minds. We had this idea, moving from Tahitian Village over to Woodlands to create our forever home. And we were trying to create our own American dream by having this bit of land and preserving the area around it, being strong advocates following Leopold and wildlife conservation. We feel that this creates strong oppositions for wildlife in the area, as well as just natural enjoyment for any of the residents in the area. So I would like to state that we oppose this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Camp. All right. The next person signed up to speak is Frank, and I believe it's Guerrero. And I apologize in advance if I don't say your name correctly. I promise I'm doing the very best I can. Good evening.
I'm Frank Guerrero, 306 Woodlands Drive. And first of all, I oppose opening up Woodlands Drive. You all would have to do upgrades. The road is not maintained for the kind of traffic that would amount from this new subdivision. You would need to upgrade the culverts and drainage. You would have to buy a right-of-way. You're affecting the lives of the children that walk it up and down the street and ride bikes. We have a country setting. Opening up, you would bring in more crime that we don't have any problem with now. So that's why I oppose.
Thank you, Mr. Guerrero. And the next person is, I believe this is Sal Armstrong?
Thank you, Mayor, and City Counsel. Appreciate it. Vehemently oppose this... And that proposed annexation of a Woodlands subdivision and coming into the city. We do not want a through-street. I've been in the Woodlands probably longer than anybody out there, 27 years. I bought the property because we had a one-way in, turn around and go back out. It's been peaceful. It's been calm. Like the gentleman said, we have lots of wildlife. Every day, my wife and I take a drive just to count the deer in our neighborhood. When we left the home, there was a fawn and two does in our front yard. You put that much traffic coming down that road, you're going to destroy that. We already have some that get hit by automobiles simply because that. We have children walking and playing on the streets because it is safe. We do not have any crime. We watch out for each other. We take care of each other. And we're not going to allow, or we don't want to allow, an opportunity for a big corporation to come in and put in a through-street to connect entire subdivision to somewhere else. When we bought it, our bylaw stated that it was a closed street. That's why we bought. That's why we live there. We love the property. We take care of it. So again, I vehemently oppose any through-street. I vehemently oppose any possibility of annexation. Our taxes will go up. Many of us are older people on fixed income. We barely can pay the taxes now. And you're going to cost people... You think you got homeless now, you're going to cost some more because people can't afford the taxes. And I don't know what else to say except for the fact, I love my neighbors, we look out for each other, we respect each other, and we want to be our community. We love Bastrop. We love Bastrop County. We wouldn't live here if we did not. And I support what they want to do with their subdivision. That's fine. That's their subdivision. Let them take care of their subdivision. Don't try to take us in and say we need to have a through-street just so they can get in and out of their place. We don't want that. We don't need that. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time, and please seriously listen to our residents because we do not want a through-street. We do not want to be part of Bastrop City per se. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. We need to maintain professional decorum, so we're not... We don't clap and we don't boo. We're just having our meeting. I do want to have a clarification of something because I feel like there's something that is misunderstood, and Mr. Borquez, I would ask you to confirm this. The annexation is for the Veridian project only, and it would only be within the PID boundary. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct. The annexation of this property upon request of the property owner does not affect anybody else's status in the ETJ.
So the Woodlands is not going to be annexed. That is not... That cannot happen, and we've got some assistance from our friends under the big dome, granite dome in Austin. The city does not have the ability to annex like they've done in the past. So the only annexation that we are able to do is voluntary annexation. So I just want to clarify that even if this project moves forward, it does not trigger any sort of annexation for the Woodlands. All right. The next person that signed up to speak was Janie Armstrong?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you. I didn't sign up to speak, but I hope for him, please don't take away our little pieces of having fun.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Armstrong. Thank you. Pablo Martinez?
I'm just here to respond to any questions and work for the developer.
Okay. Thank you. Couldn't tell that by this. All right. Isabella Stewart?
My name is Isabella LuCasey Stewart. Thank you, Mayor, and City of Council members for the time tonight. I own property at 160 FM 969, which is exactly in front of Blakely Road, and the back of my property is where Highway 20 comes. So with this development, you are truly cutting my property into four parts, and I would have to get rid of my business. I have 33 bays for RV parks that are full, and to extend Blakely Road, all those 33 bays would disappear. All the picket fences, all the front yards with grass, everything would be gone. Now, I understand development, and I understand growth, but I don't understand the property needing to go through mine for two major roads, and no one contacted me. There was a gentleman who contacted me in September with the developers, in November too, and in January, and I have made 11 phone calls. None of them have been answered. This is my business. It will be affected majorly. I own 25 acres. I have been approved to have 91 bays, and I didn't want to do an RV park that was crowded. Each bay has a yard for kids to play in. They have picket fences on both sides. They have trees. And out of the 25 acres, I'm keeping 15... And out of the 25 acres, I'm keeping 15 acres because I do know there is a lot of wildlife. We have a seven and eight pointer, and I told residents, if you get them, you're out of here. That's for everyone to enjoy. We have a pond with large-mouth bass that is catch and release. We don't want to affect all that. That's why we're developing less than half of the, I'm developing less than half of the 25 acres. But why is this happening, a development of this magnitude, that would have to cut through my property at two places? If you look at that development, look at the bottom side where Blakely Road is coming through and then 20, that is a cross. That property you're looking at is my property. Why is the development, why are things being voted on? And I will be majorly affected, and no one has taken the time to talk to me, to tell me, because I will lose the 33 spots I have. You cannot expand Blakely. It's only 100 feet wide for 1,350 feet. That's what the 33 bays are, almost a little over a mile, but they're only 100 feet wide. The road would have to do away with all of my business. Why can this happen with no one telling me? No one answering phone calls? Now, thank goodness, thank goodness that the city of Bastrop sends letters. Otherwise, I'd be in the dark. So thank you for your time. I'm opposed that the way this is happening with someone who will be affected greatly without being told. Thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. All right. Raquel Fott? Am I saying it right? Oh, she does not wish to speak, but she is opposed. I'm sorry, I was supposed to read the whole card. Sorry about that. Joey? And say your last names for me. I just call you Joey, so, and you are up next to speak.
Hello, I'm Joey Nahida. I'm with Hunt Communities. We're the developer of the colony, the property to the north of this property we're talking about. And I'm really only talking about one specific piece of the development agreement, and it's the connectivity, which, thank you, you and Ms. Bills for talking about, that the connectivity coming in or going north into the colony, that it's preliminary. And it's, so I do understand that, but I just do want to say that we are opposed to that Western, Westernmost connectivity coming into the colony. It's, and I also like just to make it known that there is a tri-party agreement that has already been approved for connectivity going into the colony. And that area to the west has, it's already been preliminary platted, and construction is already underway without that connectivity coming into the development. So I just wanted to state that. And for those reasons, we're opposed to it. But other than that, you know, we want to be a good neighbor to D.R. Horton and the property to our south, our south, and do what we can to help out the city of Bastrop in any way we can. Thank you. Just, any questions for me?
Yes, ma'am. I guess, sir, I have one question for Jennifer. Is there, is there a preliminary plat that we're not showing on that way? Is that platted?
There's a preliminary plat there. I think at the time we had this, we didn't have that information when this started, so...
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Council, any good questions? Okay. All right. I'm reading the whole thing. All right. Justin Fawn?
Evening. My name's Justin Fawn. I live at 432 Woodlands Drive, which if you look at the map, the most northern property touching this new development, that's my property. And so my first concern is drainage. They show single-family developments touching my property. If you looked at the plans they submitted, that shows a 10-foot setback from the residential structure to that property line or to my property. I'm not sure how the drainage issues or plans they've showed address that since there would be, it doesn't show any drainage, it just shows properties abutting up to my property with a 10-foot setback. The property's not flat. There's a creek that goes through the back of my property that would be affected. I don't see how these plans address that. Second, I do have an issue with the transportation, with the roads that they are proposing here. First of all, they show a road connecting to Woodlands Drive, which is never intended to be a thoroughfare, as they said that's a residential street. However, like most country residential streets, there are no sidewalks. As Mr. Armstrong pointed out, we have, I think, 88 homes in our neighborhood. Many of those have children. They have people walking, pets. We don't have sidewalks. We have a country lane. And so people are constantly walking on there, our kids riding bikes, pets are, you know, walking with their owners, plus the wildlife. Woodlands Drive connects to 71, right at 21, as if 21 were to have gone through 71. We've seen additional traffic since that light's been put in, to the point that at some point, 71 gets backed up onto 71 from the exit to our street and Highway 21. With the roads that they're showing, as the, as the colony person pointed out, their roads are not going to be connected to this new subdivision. They have a private subdivision, and I don't believe they intend their roads to connect to there. The roads that are going south are proposed, and they show two going directly from 71 into that subdivision. If you look at the Westernmost Road connected to this new development plan, the easiest route from there on 71 would be to go through on Woodlands Drive, which they've addressed, showing that it's a smaller road going to Woodlands Drive, but that's the fastest connection point from 71 back to 71. We've all been stuck in traffic on 71 from an accident, many times at the intersection on 21 near the colony. The first thing that people try and do is get off of 71 and find the quickest route out of that accident, out of that situation that they're in. From their plans, that quickest route will be through our subdivision, which is not able to accommodate that type of traffic. It's not made for that. It's a danger to everyone living in our subdivision. Second, if the 71 roads aren't developed now, the only road going from Highway 969 to 71 would be our connecting street, which once again, they've said is a residential street. We have no sidewalks. It's a community, it's a subdivision, and it's not, it cannot accommodate that type of traffic. I don't understand why their subdivision needs to join to ours. They clearly show that they have a route going to 969. They're proposing roads going to 71. The only benefit to that subdivision of joining to ours would be a direct route to 71 and that 21 intersection. In my viewing of these plans and what they presented today, it seems that it's incomplete. I don't see how the council can approve incomplete plans for it to move forward with all these questions. They, in the plans, they talk about addressing these transportation issues with TechDOT, with the City Transportation Commission. I don't see that that's been done, if these are the plans that they're submitting. There are many more questions that it brings up than answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fawn. Robert Meyer?
My name, excuse me, my name is Robert Meyer. I reside at 116 Timber Court, which is just a cul-de-sac off of Woodlands Drive. I've been there for about a year. And as previous speakers have talked about, it's a great place to live, especially from the standpoint, you feel like you're in the country. There's not very much traffic there, only the residents there with the traffic. Therefore, it allows lots of folks to walk on the side of the road. Children can ride their bikes there. My concern and my objection to this is the connectivity issue, which you've already heard quite a bit about. I also wonder, as I look at this, many of that plan are concepts. They're not really finalized there. Do we really know what will, where the traffic will be able to get out of that subdivision? Probably until they all get developed, a lot of that new traffic is going to come down Woodlands Drive. And for those of you that may or may not be acquainted with Woodlands Drive, it was built only as a residential street. Now, over time, at best, it's a poor residential street. The sides of the roads need a lot of work. They're falling off there. So people are walking on the sides of the roads. My concern is with an increase of traffic, which if we, as I understand, there's going to be 1,600 different residences in there or places. Well, if we, that's probably with people in households, they have two cars, maybe one, but we're going to be adding 2,500 to 3,000 cars down there. They've either gotta go right, or they're gonna come to Woodlands Drive. What is the impact? Have we even done a study of, on that road? It's easy to connect to it, but we own the problem. We own the problem there and a lot of unanswered questions there at this point. So we own that problem. And to me, it's a safety issue also, too. Safety for not only the people that want to live there and walk along there, but with that condition of that road, it's a safety issue for folks that would be coming out of the subdivision there. So I hope you will find that, we shouldn't move along here too hastily on this. It has a lot of, a lot of problems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next person is John Poyner? I could go for Payne, I could go for Poyner, 500 West Ben White Boulevard? The John part, I'm really clear about. Anybody? Okay. Christopher Gongaware? How close? Yes. All right. Tell us your name and address.
Yes, ma'am. Christopher Gongaware at 235 Woodlands Drive. Appreciate you. I'm making a stab at the name. It's an oddball. I want to say thank you all for being here this evening and just taking, staying in the government and doing a lot of things that I know have a lot of difficulty to them. So I appreciate all the efforts you all put in and keeping us safe and making the city and the county work. Yeah, I'm at 235 Woodlands Drive there. Got medically discharged from the military about two years ago and found that Bastrop was a place that I really wanted to kind of spend the rest of my time and my life at. And a lot of my fellow residents here in the neighborhood have already voiced a lot of the concerns that I have around safety and changes to the ecology and the environment. It's, Woodlands Drive, it's a very wooded area and a very beautiful place with a lot of wildlife to it. I know that something of this size would certainly have an impact, not only on our neighborhood, but a city of Bastrop at large. I grew up in Northern Virginia outside of DC, and I used to see subdivisions like this come in and come in and come in during my whole growing up there. And as a lot of concerns have been stated, is that it definitely will change things having, having something of this size, not just for the residents of the Woodlands, but I've heard a few different numbers. I don't know if it was 1,300 or 1,600 or however many houses is gonna come in, and on 267 acres works out to about a fifth of an acre per house. And it's a lot of, it's a lot to be cramming into such a small area. And my concern is certainly for our own well-being and our safety in the Woodland subdivision, but also the changes that'll come down to the city of Bastrop, add in probably about 25 or 30 percent to the population of the city just by having something of this size come in. And I've seen the, the amount of change that can take place with that, and I can certainly say that more is not necessarily better when it comes to introducing a lot more congestion into a city so lovely as Bastrop. So, yeah, I just want to express love for the town and appreciate what you all are doing here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Kristi Welsh?
Hi, my name is Kristi Welsh. I am not a public speaker, so bear with me. I live at 245 Woodlands Drive. Thank you, Mayor and Council members, for hearing us today. I'm gonna be opposed to the new development specifically for the cut-through road through Woodlands Drive. We moved here from North San Antonio, where they were packing in developments and every square inch they could fit them in, and the traffic was awful. Drivers would cut through our neighborhood and to avoid the traffic backup, and frequently drivers would fly through stop signs near our house. It was a concern mainly for our children. I have a four-year-old that has no concept of danger and just kind of runs out. So every time he went out that front door, it scared me to death. When we moved to Bastrop, which we looked high and low all over the Travis and Bastrop County, we absolutely loved Bastrop and everything about it. We found our, and our first priority was to the safety of our children. We were thrilled when we found the Woodland subdivision because it was a country setting. It was safe for my children. The only road in and out was one-way. I knew that my neighbors were, you know, kind of looking out for my kids, and that was just absolutely just, we couldn't have asked for a better place. And now that this proposed development is looking through a cut-through, that's a concern for us. We take walks on Woodlands Drive. As a lot of my neighbors know me as the lady with the stroller, I go through up and down Woodlands in the evenings. And as some of my other neighbors have said, the road isn't perfect. It's a little advanced in age. And so the sides are kind of falling, falling off. So I have to actually be in the middle of the road so my stroller doesn't roll. We have very steep embankments. There's just no way to be off the side. And my children do go with me on a walk. And my neighbors know that they've got to kind of make a wide berth for my four-year-old so that he doesn't decide to just pop out and run into traffic. And they know us. They know we can walk safely. I know I can walk safely with my children. From what I'm seeing of all the different roads going out, I don't think it's necessary for them to cut through Woodlands Drive. They say, again, other neighbors have spoke to as well, but they say this is gonna be a neighborhood good, but they can't control the number of cars that go through Woodlands Drive. We are connected to 71. It's an easy way. It's, it looks like all the other roads are proposed, but it's an easy way to connect to Woodlands and not have to do much. The development is not going to pay for sidewalks and to ensure the safety of the Woodlands residents. They're not gonna do anything to, and, you know, they've said, you know, it's just a minor problem, but they're not, oh, my time has expired. Sorry. Thank you.
Well, you can wind up. We don't have to.
They're, sorry. They're, they're, they're working on their development. They're not working on what are concerned as a neighbor, and I don't think that's very neighborly of them. We're okay with the development, but we want to make sure the safety of our children are maintained.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. You did great. All right. Joe Welsh? Joe Welsh, see, he didn't want to follow. If you want to speak, that's fine, but you can't speak from there because then they can't hear you at home. So you have to come to the microphone. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Welsh. All right. Suzanne Gambino? All right. Well, you are allowed to change your mind, so come on up. You get three minutes if you'll say your name and your address.
Yes, Suzanne Gambino. I live at 132 Sawmill Court, which is a cul-de-sac off of Woodlands Drive. Thank you so much for your service and your volunteer and your work that you do for our city. So my husband and I, Rick, we lived in Austin for nine years in a condo. He's a welder, I'm a teacher. It took a lot of savings and a lot of really hard work for us to buy our dream here in Bastrop. He is a Bastrop High School graduate. I'm from Kansas City, Missouri. So it was a big deal. So it was a big deal for us to move to the country and come to Bassdrop. I'm a teacher, I've taught special ed for twenty-two years, and so it's a pleasure of mine to serve the city in that way. Many of the neighbors, I think, will agree that we moved there because we wanted to live in the country. Sorry, I'm used to speaking to little kids all day long, but for some reason you get up here in front of adults and it's like, oh my gosh, I forgot how to talk. So in our neighborhood, me as well as other neighbors, we have horses, and we like to ride our horses. And we ride our horses on those roads. We also have a neighbor who has a business, a horse-riding business, and she is teaching other people how to ride horses by using those streets, the roads, I should say. I'm not going to repeat what all of the other neighbors have said about the condition of the road, I think we made that clear. Just in closing, happy residents make good citizens for Bassdrop. And we would all be very, very happy living in our little country setting if we did not have the cut-through to the development. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Gambino. All right, and I have Rick Gambino, and you didn't want to speak either, have you changed your mind?
No, she said no.
All right. Supporting the wife, good move, good move. All right. That is all of the folks that we have signed up. Is there anybody else that was wanting to speak that didn't get a chance to speak? So you didn't fill out the card because?
We filled out objection on, I guess we must have let him know.
I think he filled out the one that came in the mail, so I think he's, and I think I have. I have that in my table.
Okay. So, Mr. Attorney, what's my, can I just have them come forward and say their name and address, or what's the right way to do it? It sounds like there was a miscommunication.
Mayor, under the circumstances, I would say it's at the discretion of the mayor to allow it to go on, and they can cite their paperwork, such as name and address, into the record verbally.
Okay. That's what I'm going to do. I, Nola Lynn. Nola or Kevin, who wants to go first?
First.
Oh, yeah, wives are going first tonight. All right. Nola Lynn, if you'll state your name and address.
Hi, I, my name is Nola Lynn, I live at thirty-seven, excuse me, I started quoting an old address, four-three-one Woodlands Drive. Justin is my neighbor right across from me, our property borders on to the property, and that's why when I filled out the form, it was the one that we got in the mail.
Okay.
I was one of the, excuse me, one of the three that spoke originally at the first meeting, and I was very discouraged on how we were treated in that our opinion didn't count. We were pretty much led to believe that Bassdrop's going to need to make money, this is going to happen, and we need to be neighborly and accept that our road's going to be used. And that really made me sad and angry at the same time. So again, I am vehemently opposing the throughway for the Woodlands Drive into this new development. It is right outside my house. And I spoke up also about the animals, because that four-hundred acres has been like that for a long time. The colony has come in, the colony is coming in above, this is now coming in. So all that's left is the duff property below us, and our property for those animals, we have deer, we have bobcats, we have coyotes, we have squirrels, we have coyotes, and they're going to have to go somewhere. And I hate that they are getting taken down as the don't care because of the almighty dollar. They're going to come onto our property, so if we're going to have all that extra traffic, that is just going to, it's not going to work. We're quite happy to have the wildlife come live with us. I always refer to where I live in the city, in the country, because it's ten minutes down to downtown Bassdrop, which we all said we love, we love where we live, but it is a country road. We want to keep our neighborhood a country environment. And Raquel may not have spoken, but she handed in a petition from all of our neighbors, we had a meeting on our street, and you will have a lot more signatures there of people that are not here speaking today that are also vehemently opposing the road going through. We know the development's going to happen, we're going to have to live with that, we're going to miss the wildlife, being able to be free, but we do not want that road connection. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. All right, Mr. Lynn, are you going to follow her? All right, Kevin Lynn.
Hi, my name's Kevin Lynn, and I'm at four-three-one Woodlands Drive, and I do oppose it. My main, one of my main concerns besides is the wildlife, and also I do have a little bit of a farm going, and my concern is that the city of Bassdrop, that becomes a city of Bassdrop, how many problems are we going to have with all the small little houses going to be built next to me when they start complaining if I've got chickens or goats or doing my work in my, on my property? Because I used to live in a suburb and where people would complain if you took out an angle grinder and did a little bit of a home project, people complained. And it's one of the reasons I moved out there, because it's dead quiet, nobody complains when I do my work. As far as the through road, I'm opposed to that as well, because I do walk my dogs along the road whenever I get a chance to do it, and it's, it's nice, it's peaceful, it's quiet out there. And having a lot of traffic go through, I can see there will be a lot of issues with people, I know people be racing along, and as I said, most of the people, when they do go for a walk out there, it's like an unknown or unspoken rule, if you're in a car, you slow down. You know pedestrians have the right of way on our road, you know, if somebody's out there walking with kids, dogs, whatever, you slow down, go past, and I don't see people in a subdivision really doing that, especially if it's a shortcut going through from seventy-one. That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think there was one more hand, and I don't have any more cards. So if you'd just please come forward and state your name and give us your address, we'd love to hear from you.
So I did mail it in, so you'll probably get it tomorrow.
Okay. Sorry.
My name is Dewan Fields, and I live at one-oh-five George Kimble Cove. I'm in the colony, so I'm on the opposite side of the Woodlands.
Okay.
Being in a quandary here because I know things have to expand, my concern really is about, in addition to what everyone else has said, nine-six-nine. So this development will cut into nine-six-nine. Being in the colony, there is a development on one side of nine-six-nine, the, I guess that would be what, eastern side, western side, and then there's a development on the eastern side. It is already jammed, and you have people coming southward on nine-six-nine. It's already dangerous because that's a two-lane highway. It'll take a while for this to start to develop and gain traction, but I don't know where the process is for expanding nine-six-nine, because it is not going to hold construction, construction removal, debris removal, trucks going in and out, seeing what's already there with the colony. It's going to be a nightmare trying to turn in and out, going in and out, in that shorter span, because you're talking less than a quarter of a mile, I mean, of having these two developments, and they're still working on them. Colony's talking about adding a school, that's just a lot of construction in such a condensed area to say, is it possible to work on the roadway first and then develop? It's almost like putting the cart before the horse, because where is this traffic going to go? I know there has to be a road, you know, everybody wants it going through their section, and I get that, but is there a way to expand the more prevalent area first before starting to do that type of construction? That would be my concern.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I might ask again, is there anybody else that wants to speak tonight? Okay, then it is eight forty-eight, and I am closing the public hearing. And the applicant, do you have any, is there any comments that you're wanting to make?
Mayor, while the applicant is coming forward.
Certainly, Councilmember Jackson.
I was going to ask, because I was going to ask later if the applicant could maybe respond to some of these concerns from the neighbors, neighborhood and everything, because it's put me kind of in a quandary, too, wondering if, if cutting through the neighborhood and the traffic situations, the things they were talking about, how you feel about that, how you plan to address that.
Sure. So good evening, Mayor and City Manager and Councilmembers. My name is Mike Bohm, I'm with D.R. Horton, we're Continental Homes of Texas. That's part of the development agreement in front of you today. And so this development, just real briefly, we presented kind of a development agreement working with staff on the overall land plan to match what city zoning and transportation networks and everything involve. What we're showing today is something that's been in the works a couple of months that we've worked excellently with the staff on. And, you know, as, as far as land use and everything, we're a single-family residential builder, this is right into what our business model is and what we'd like to do on the property. Seeing all the residents today come with Woodlands Drive brings up new concerns, and so I think that's something that we'd like to work on addressing, if possible, through, you know, crash gate or some sort of network for emergency access only, if need be, for that little space to Woodlands Drive. So, you know, the land plan as it shows and our phasing of this development, we'd be coming off of FM nine-six-nine for the initial phases of our development and moving towards the west, annexing plats within the city as we go. And so the, you know, the strategy would be that that's, that's our process through and providing these additional points of connection eventually along the way. Hope that, hopefully addressed your concern. Do you have another question?
I guess, since one of the major concerns I heard tonight was about the cutting through on Woodlands Drive, I mean, is that the only option that you have to, for that subdivision that you're planning?
No, sir, no. That's, that's a point of connection to the outside boundary of the property. The main connection is to FM nine-six-nine.
So let me help out with this a little bit by asking the City Manager. I believe it's city staff that asked them to hook to Woodlands, is that correct?
That is, that is correct, in accordance with what the master transportation plan lays out and the grid network that is part of the objective as described earlier by, in the staff presentation. It is.
So I just, we need to be clear that it's, the developer didn't say, hey, we really want to run through Woodlands. City staff is following the connectivity, because I believe, and Ms. Bills, you may be the best person to answer this, but from seventy-one to the end of Woodlands, that is a mile and a half, that's one way in and one way out. And we are talking about, we're at the tenth anniversary of the complex fire, and we've got two council members that live in Tahitian, and we've, there is some experience in issues with one way in and one way out. Now, that being said, City Manager, would you comment on an emergency only? Is, you know, is that a possible middle ground that it's, that it would be an access that's only for emergencies?
Yeah, and I appreciate the gentleman making the suggestion about a, a crash gate and that, yeah, we would certainly be happy to take a look at that as we move through the process. As, as we indicated earlier, there are other steps that still need to happen with the, with the, with the plating process, and that certainly, that's council's interest, we could certainly strongly evaluate that as we move on.
Okay. I, I feel like, and we can't have everyone speak again, but if it was a, an emergency crash and an emergency exit, I feel like that, I'm getting some nods and not the angry glares I was getting earlier, so I think that may, that may help with things. The other thing for you guys to realize is that that road came all the way to the property and dead-ended. And there, someone, when they originally built Woodlands, which was probably before many of you lived there, they thought that road would continue on. If they didn't want the road to continue, it would have been a cul-de-sac, and there would have been lot lines, and there wouldn't be a connection. So it, it's, it's two sides of a coin, right? And there could be a time, the public hearing is closed, the public hearing is closed, so council's going to talk about things, but there could be a time when you might be very happy that there is a way to get out of that, and, and maybe if it's backed up to seventy-one, that you're able to get to nine-six-nine. But the things that are really important for the neighborhood to understand is that the developer has shown a connection to Woodlands because staff is following the B-three code, the lessons learned from the complex fire of having connectivity. So if, if you're irritated, be irritated at us, we set the policy, staff's enforcing that policy. That being said, given the conditions that we have, it sounds like the City Manager, the emergency crash through to address an emergency situation is one possible solution. I also want to address, there was some comments about, this seems really conceptual, and I would remind you in the packet, we're, we're on step one of twenty-seven, and there will be a finalized drainage plan that's done by a professional engineer that's reviewed. So, so part of why they don't have all of their final construction plans is they'd like a shot that this is what the layout looks like before they produce final construction plans to be told, hey, we'd really like you to move this alignment. So they, they, we are in the process, and we are in the beginning part of the process, so that's why things are in concept. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, Mayor. A gentleman back here brought up a very interesting question about traffic on nine-six-nine. I just want to ask the developer, has anyone talked with, texted out about putting a left hairline in?
Yes, sir, yes. So we, as part of this development, are required to do a traffic impact analysis, and so that is in the works, and it's been submitted to TextDOT as well as Bassdrop County to look at and review. And it, it comes up with mitigation procedures for this area and the surrounding area to help alleviate some of the traffic concerns that this development would bring.
Very good, thank you.
Excellent question, Mr. Peterson. And I believe then the other part of what we're talking about in this concept plan is if, as you're working with TextDOT, they may have you move where that intersection point with nine-six-nine is, that could move north or south a little bit, and they'll have to comply. So everyone knows nine-six-nine is TextDOT, that is not a city road, so they'll, they have to get permission from TextDOT. Council, other questions for the applicant?
And Mayor, the other thing I wanted to bring up, I mean, the main comment I was going to say, I also, there was comments about drainage, some of that stuff is studies, this is very conceptual land plan, and that's what we're doing is a land use within the pit boundary and then moving back towards more detailed engineering studies and making sure everything works within the codes that are approved.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jackson?
Right, hearing that, you know, that was staff's recommendation and that maybe a crash gate of some kind can be established and some of the other things, and since we're early in the development stage, that kind of allays some of my fears. I'm still a little bit concerned because of the number of comments that came from the audience, from the citizens, and I'm, I'm just wondering if the developer is going to be able to work with them and take into consideration some of those concerns, because it's, there were quite a few, and a lot of them were quite disturbing, and especially with the connection. I heard from one property owner about the, the RV park and how that's going to impact that by dividing the property and some other things. And there were just several things that were alarming to me. And if it's alarming to me, I'm sure it's alarming to some of the residents of that subdivision. And so I'm kind of between a rock and a hard place, a rock and a hard place right now, trying to decide on how I'm going to go along with this or not. But since it has several more steps, I just want to see if you are willing to try to work more with those neighbors that had concerns and see if there's another way of addressing that. And I just, I'm asking you directly that question.
Yes, sir, yeah. I mean, we, we can, you know, again, what's shown is, you know, within the property boundaries of the four-hundred acres, it's part of this development agreement. I think it was brought up initially that the highlighted roadways outside are based off a master transportation plan the city's adopted and working with city staff on those networks of what's planned for the future. But yes, very much willing and able to and can provide contact information for, for us as developer district.
Right. Particularly disturbing was the fact that I think one of the residents said she had called eleven times and had not gotten a response, and it's directly affecting her property, and I don't know if there are others that are having similar problems, but that's, that's, that's also disturbing, and I'm hoping that you'll be able to reach out to her and talk to her a little bit about that later on and see if that can be resolved.
Yes, sure. I can do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I kind of, I agree a lot with what Councilmember Jackson's saying about these, the Woodlands and going into the other subdivisions and the master, the master transportation plan, I cannot talk tonight. So I just don't understand how they can make connections without getting the property owner, how could they connect into the Woodlands without Woodlands saying you can't? See what I'm saying? Is that part of the master transportation plan? Am I misunderstanding that?
So that, so when you do subdivisions and phases or standalone subdivisions, a lot of times, we have what's called stub- of times, we have what's called stub outs. So, you have a right-of-way that literally dead-ends at the next property, and the intention is to continue that on. So, while Woodlands functions as a cul-de-sac and it's got the turnaround at the end, if you actually look, the right-of-way was dedicated all the way to the property line to continue it on. So, with our master transportation plan and the county's plan, the intention was always to connect that back somehow.
Okay, that's what, I was, thank you for answering that question for me.
In the same with the properties right to the south, that RV park has developed since our master transportation plan was adopted. So, those are the master transportation roads shown when it was adopted and developed in 2016, 17. When we update our master transportation plan, we'll have to look at those newly developed conditions and figure out if we need to adjust roads at that point. But similarly, those, when we get to the plats in those areas, we'll look at those stub outs to the next property when those plats come in.
Okay, thank you for answering that question. I was just trying to make sure I understood how it, how they can do things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. Mayor Protem Nelson?
One of the beauties of having a public hearing is be able to, to, to get input from people and ideas that perhaps did not occur. And one of the things we've found is that the developer is willing to make some modifications and working with the city to, to perhaps block the road in some way, shape, or form to still allow emergency access. The process is so early in, we're so early in the process that it is advantageous for us to listen and act upon those things. I always say analyze, assess, plan, and then act, and I appreciate your offer of doing so. I think this is something that we can continue, have an open dialogue on with Councilmember Jackson's comment about the residents there in the Woodlands. We have to remember that this entire area was undeveloped at one point in time, and whenever homes went in, that was deserving some level of wildlife and somebody who was already living there in some way, shape, or form. Not to discount Charles' concerns in any way, shape, or form, for sure. But this is so early in the process, and please allow us to continue, the city staff as well as the developer, to continue the dialogue, to make sure your needs are addressed. There's, it's a private property owner. We didn't invite them in. They came in and said, this is some viable process that we think we want to go through. It's part of being a capitalistic society, so it's, it's something that we need to listen to, to, to friends and neighbors, but we still need to understand that growth is coming to Bastrop County whether we want it or not. It's just a matter of us managing that growth by getting optimum input from the citizens. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Nelson. All right, council, are there any other questions for staff or the applicant?
I would just like the, the developer to know that as your process goes through, I will be watching to make sure that you're actually paying attention to your neighbors' requests, and I'm taking your word that you're going to honor those and you're going to follow their needs, so I'm going to watch to make sure you're going to do that.
Dito.
Okay, I move to approve. Somebody waiting on me to say it.
I have a motion to approve from Council-
With my eye on you.
A motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers with the evil eye.
I'll second.
And a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? And this council would be approving the development agreement, which, as we said, is one of the first steps in the process. With no, hearing no further discussion, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, step one.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, with concerns.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes with a five-zero vote, and we are going to take a five-minute break because I think there's going to be a lot of movement in the room. Thank you. Madam Secretary, do you have anyone else signed up for citizen comments or just the one?
Just the one, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Jay Howard? Mr. Jay Howard with citizen comments.
Yes, my name is Jay Howard. I'm with Texas Disposal Systems, mayor, council, city manager. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time this evening. I just wanted to come by and introduce myself, our company, and express our interest in possibly someday doing business with the city. We, Texas Disposal Systems is a private, family-owned company based about 30 miles west of here in Creedmore, Texas. We are in the solid waste and recycling services business. In addition to being a service provider, we actually own and operate a large-scale landfill there in Creedmore as well as a recycling facility and composting facility. As far as this area goes, we have a lot of residential and commercial customers just outside of your city limits. We have a partnership with the independent school district here in Bastrop for all of the campuses just outside of the city limits. We don't take care of the campuses inside city limits because they fall under your current solid waste contract. And as I'm sure you're all very aware, y'all are in the midst of a seven-year contract with your current hauler that, if I understand correctly, is up at the end of next year, toward the end of next year, so more than a year off at this point. But I'm assuming it between now and then, you all will be discussing and considering whether or not to renew that existing contract or open it up to competitive bids. And obviously, I'm here tonight to pitch for opening up to competitive bids. We'd love to be able to throw our hat in the ring next year and compete for your business, so we hope to have that opportunity. I've had a chance to visit with Mr. Hoffman. I've left my contact information on the comment card if anybody'd like to reach out. I'd love to visit with you about our company, what we do, and how we work with the communities and customers we take care of. So, anyway, I will stay in touch and look forward to seeing you all again soon. I appreciate you giving me a few minutes tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Howard. You know that we can't discuss that because it's not on the agenda, but you get the E for effort for staying through all of that, so we appreciate that.
Thank you. Y'all take care.
And Madam Secretary, we don't have anyone else signed up for citizen comments?
No, ma'am.
All right, council, we're moving on to the consent agenda, and I'm going to be pulling these items separately. Item 12A is consider action to approve city council minutes from the June 22, 2021 regular meeting.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Council, Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. On item 12B, Mayor Protem Nelson will be recusing himself. Consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2021-08 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the 2021 service plan update, including provisions related to the assessments for the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, approving a fiscal year 2022 assessment role for the district containing other provisions relating Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District and the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Corporation, providing for an effective date.
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jackson?
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Crouch. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am. I just would like to state that I sit on that Hunter's Crossing pit board, voted on that, and I abstained from that vote, but I vote for, yes, for this one.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
The motion passes four-zero. Mayor Protem Nelson will be rejoining us. Council, we already took care of item 13A. We are moving on to item 13B. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2021-68 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, awarding a contract for Myers Concrete Construction in the amount of $596,545.70 for the construction of the River Loop Sidewalk Project attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Hi, Fabiola.
Hello. I think I went too far. Good evening, mayor and city council members. What I have in front of you tonight is a construction call for the River Loop Sidewalk Project. I'm presenting on behalf of Tony Bonadorno, city engineer and also project manager on this project. He wanted to be with us tonight, and he was going to try to join us virtually, but I think he's still having issues online, so I'll continue with the presentation. So, a little bit of background, we advertised for this project sometime the end of May until beginning of June. We receive, we opened bids on June 17, and we received five qualified bids, and Myers Concrete Construction was the lowest responsible bidder with an amount of $596,546.70. The other bids range from about $650,000 and $1,250,000. The engineer's cost estimate was around $806,000. The bid was checked for accuracy by the engineer of record, Bowman Consulting. The reference was checked, and they're all positive, and Bowman Consulting is recommending award of Myers Concrete Construction, and we have a representative with us here tonight from Bowman Consulting, is Mayor Hernandez. This is the project work limits. We are going, starting on the intersection of Old Austin Highway with 150 Loop going south until 71 Frontage Road and then east until Perkins Street, and the other section is at the intersection of Main Street and Austin Street going south until College Street. So, with your approval tonight, we will execute this agreement between city and the contractor. We intend to provide a notice to proceed at this month and then starting construction on August, and the timeline of this project is substantial completion within 180 days within notice to proceed and final completion 200 days from the notice to proceed. So, with the approval of this, this city of, the engineering department recommends that you authorize the approval of resolution number R 2021-68 to award a construction contract to Myers Concrete Construction for the city of Bastrop River Loop Sidewalk Project in the amount of $596,545.70. And I'll take any questions at this moment.
Council, any questions?
I so move that we go ahead to authorize the approval of resolution R 2021-68 to award a construction contract to Myers Concrete Construction to the city of Bastrop River Loop Sidewalk Project in the amount of $596,000.
You don't have to do all that, we got you.
Well, I choose to do it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's part, that is my motion.
Okay. And did you, did you want to finish any more of the amount or anything?
You didn't say 40 cents.
Well, I was, I was cut off, okay, and 70 cents.
All right.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Jackson, I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, thank you, council, unanimous approval. It's been a long time coming. I know there's some folks that are going to be really anxious and excited to have that done. As, council, as we spoke earlier, item 13C has been pulled by the applicant. We all remember item 13D. We're moving on to item 13E. Consider action to approve resolution number R 2021-67 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving an agreement for the emergency communication services between Bastrop County and the city of Bastrop, attached as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Chief Nagy?
Yes. Good evening, mayor, council, city manager. All right. Oh, Colin, what am I doing?
Going the wrong way.
Am I going the wrong way? All right, here we go. All right. I'm still going the wrong way.
You're still clicking.
I'm not clicking. There we go, all right. So, yes, this is going to be a discussion via Bastrop and really Bastrop County or the Bastrop County Emergency Communications Center to go ahead and continue the current agreement that we have. Just prior to council, I put up a new resolution, and there was no major changes to that resolution other than it was in a packet, other than that it clarified what an agreement was. I used the word agreement, it was a little ambiguous, and now it is called the first modification to that agreement. So, the city of Bastrop, our police and our fire services are dispatched by the Bastrop County Emergency Communications Center, and currently, we pay just about $286,000 a year, and that has been the case for 28, through 2018, through this fiscal year. The agreement is a two-year term, and then each year after that is also a one-year term unless we come back and make some sort of adjustments. So, now, in the new fiscal year, we are pending an increase of just about $45,000 that would start on October 1 of 2021 for the new total of about $330,000 for the next two years. Of course, that's on an annual basis, and we'll pay that every year for the next two years. I wanted to give you just a little bit of feedback on what dispatch does for our city. First, they are obviously a 24/7 service that, and we have a dedicated dispatcher, particularly for the police department because we do have quite a bit of calls, and they also dispatch for numerous other police services, other fire departments, ESDs, and also start for dispatcher, for EMS as well. They're a standalone county department. They used to be associated with the sheriff's office, but they are now standalone. I think that's been since 2016 or 2017. 26, 26 full-time employees, four shift commanders, and they also have supervision on it every day, and then they have a director as well. So, once again, 24/7 police and fire, that includes traffic stops, crashes, any type of critical incidents. Sometimes that is just a basic phone call as well, animal services, and also code compliance. I have quarterly meetings with the director and their supervision, and Chief Andres Rosales also has those as well. They incur all costs of the dispatcher's equipment and training, and that is really important in this day and age as we're trying to hire people. And then fire is dispatched by them, but with this new agreement or this new modification to the agreement, fire is technically no longer going to be charged for their calls for service. The main reason for that is because the ESDs are not being charged, so it wasn't necessary for it to charge us as well. So, our citywide call volumes, so from, I'm sorry, that should be 2018, we've had about 17,000, and that has increased to 22,000 in 19, and we stayed about the same with a slight increase that is in 2020, I'm sorry, fall in 2020, and then from 21 to July now, we're probably going to see an increase for this fiscal year, about this calendar year as well. And total calls for the 911 system, so this is all calls going in for all of Bastrop County, it's about 48,000 911 calls. They field about 86,000 non-emergency calls. They answer their calls within about 10 seconds, about 97% of time, and that is really, really good, so they're, they really want to make sure that they're really above that 95%, and they're just at about 97, almost 98%. And they dispatch a total of just about 86,000 calls through the computer-aided dispatch This is just a quick picture of what their dispatch center is like, so once they would kind of stand alone, they were still housing a sheriff's office, but over the last, I think it's been about two years, they opened up this really fantastic center. It is very large, they've got room to grow, and they've got top-of-the-line equipment. Elgin also has a dispatch, but their PSAP is closing down, so a PSAP is, is the answering system for the county through 911, and Bastrop County is just going to start a contract with them to pull in the Elgin calls as well. So, really, just a review, from 28, 2018, we just paid about $286,000. The modification to this agreement, so we're only modifying just the compensation portion of this agreement, it's about $45,000. The total amount for 2022 is going to be $330,000. Once again, that takes place on October 1 of this year. Quarterly payments are due the 1st of October, January 1, April, and then in July, and we have also kind of allocated those budgets for this year's proposed budget.
Thank you very much, Chief Nagy. I believe my understanding from talking with city manager is there is no way we could start our own and do it for that amount of money.
That's correct. We would look at about 60, $600,000, $700,000, really just to get it started.
So, there, it's one of those times where there is definitely leverage and advantages to working together with the partnership. Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, did you say this, this amount, this, it's an increase, but it locks us in for two years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, annually for two years.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
I think Mr. Peterson.
Councilmember Peterson?
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Peterson?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Jackson, or is it Crouch or Jack? It's Jackson.
Doc beat me.
Doc beat you, okay. So, I've got Councilmember Peterson with the motion, Councilmember Jackson with the second. Is there any discussion? Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes, there is, by the way. I, I certainly see the cost benefit of the collaborative venture with the county, and I'm happy to hear that, that Elgin will be joining in. Is Smithville involved in it in any way, shape, or form?
They are not, no. They are not, no, and I don't, uh, Smithville won't be.
Okay, that's, that's pretty clear. And there's also with, with, uh, excuse me, with PSAPs, there's also a move toward, toward regional coordination and redundancy in, in play there. And you said the, the fire department is not charged for their calls anymore, yet our cost is going up twenty percent. Do we have an explanation of why it went up twenty percent?
Yes, uh, so for last year, twenty eighteen through, uh, twenty nineteen, our costs are, uh, we, we've done a lot better job of calculating how we're getting our calls, so we're, we are getting a, I think, a good deal on, on this process, at least for these next two years, because we're actually calculated from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, how many calls went into that system, and then everything is applied to the total amount. I'm not being clear.
No, you are, you are.
Uh, and so just kind of as we go up in calls for service, as, uh, dispatch, um, as their costs go up, we have to cover a little bit more of those costs.
It's more of a pro-rata share?
Yes, yes.
But you're, but you're satisfied with, with the rate of, with the, 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 our city investment?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. City Manager, did you want to make a statement?
Yeah, I was just going to add that one of the reasons for the cost increase is the, uh, the compensation increases for the communication officers or the dispatchers, that, that is a really competitive area, and, uh, PSAPs all over the region are struggling to make sure those positions are filled. Uh, I know that's a real priority of the county. I, I agree with Chief Nagy, I think that's a, a very well-run operation, there's a lot of, uh, pretty intense personnel management that goes along with that, so it's not just the six hundred thousand dollars that we would have to outlay if we were to run a PSAP on our own, and that's, that's, that's not an easy operation to add to the, to the mix. And
That's correct.
And we, and the, the county, it holds themselves accountable, and we have those quarterly meetings, and they've been real responsive to taking care of the City of Bastrop.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
For our friends at the county, I wouldn't question the validity of the program, only questioning the, the call so it'd be clarification for me, so.
All right, any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, thank you, Counsel, the motion passes unanimously. Now, what we've all been waiting for. Item thirteen F, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash eleven of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending Chapter Nine Personnel, Article nine point oh-one, Section nine point oh-one point oh-oh-one of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances relating to the adoption of the employee handbook, making comprehensive revisions to that handbook, repealing conflicting ordinances and resolutions, including a severability clause, establishing an effective date, and proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the July twenty-seventh City Council consent agenda for a second reading. I'm pretty sure that's clause and not cause, but I read it like it was written. All right, Ms. Cantrell, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Councilmembers. Um, really happy to be here. The good news is I've got this down to a solid sixteen minutes, and I talk really fast in front of all of you, so I think I'm going to shave that down to about eight or ten. Um, before I get started with my presentation, I'd like to give special thanks to Zaina Jones. She's my HR generalist, and she was, uh, huge in getting this project done. She was an auditor in her previous life, so she really likes things neat and precise and in order, and she's made, um, this Personnel Employee Handbook just look really great, and all of her input has been invaluable, so thank you, Zaina. Rick Gulickson swooped in at the very end with our table of contents and did it with a program, um, helped us get it all in line, I can't remember the name of that program, but he was great. This is actually the first document that our CSET team is going to be pushing out guidelines for our branding and formatting and things like that, so Rick was instrumental in making this document fit all of those, uh, guidelines that are going to be coming down the pike, so that's exciting. I want to also thank all of the council members for your input throughout all of this process, um, the department directors who reviewed, and also Christian, who is an attorney at the Borquez Law Forum, was, uh, instrumental and really helpful and went through this with a fine-tooth comb and, um, was very helpful in getting it all reeled in for us and, and, and the document that's in front of you today. So with that said, we'll move forward. So just a little background, the last revision was completed in two thousand and five, and of course, specific chapters have been updated since, uh, that were relevant. Um, management and department directors conducted a comprehensive review in twenty twenty, and, uh, then Human Resources incorporated those changes. We've also utilized Texas Municipal Human Resources Association Employee Handbook Toolkit that, uh, is available to us, um, and we utilize that as a reference for mandated changes that were added, added. And then City Manager Paul Hoffman completed his review in May of this year, and Christian completed his review in June of twenty twenty-one of this year. And here we are tonight. So I'm by no means going to go, um, through all of the changes that were completed, I did send a memo and the agenda packet to y'all, uh, specifically, that's what we're going to go through tonight, um, and so with that, we'll just get started. Chapter one, Personnel Administration Introduction, we just incorporated a more welcoming introduction for the employees to kind of let them know what they could expect coming on board with the City of Bastrop. Section two, City Government Today, basically, we talk about in that section just what form of government we have, that there's a mayor, five council members, that the mayor only votes in a tie, the city manager doesn't, just kind of gives them a background because people coming into government don't have that background, so gives them an introduction to that. And then Section three was the council meetings, we just wanted to make sure that they know, number one, when the council meetings are, that they're open to the public, and we also cordially invite them in the employee handbook to come to those meetings so they know what's going on at our city. And then also, Section nine, Personnel Administration, was the city manager's right to get, delegate the duties of all of, um, and the authority over all personnel decisions when it comes to, uh, the staff. Chapter two, Recruitment and Selection, of course, we've always had in the, um, handbook that we hire based on knowledge, skills, and abilities, and that we don't discriminate, but one of the things that we added in that section was that we also want to promote education and training in order to promote our employees internally when possible, so it sets them on a path of, hey, if I get educated and, 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 and some more certifications in this field, I'll have a chance at, um, bettering myself at the city. And then Section three, Applications, we, um, introduced our city portal, portal, uh, for government jobs, and so this just kind of applies to that and, and introduces, um, the portal. Chapter three, Equal Employment Opportunities, Section three, Americans with Disabilities Act, that's always been in the handbook, however, we, um, added the part of, to employees on how they can specifically go about asking for requests on that, and that there is a specific form that they can fill out. And Chapter five, Employee Interductory Period, Section one, Fire and Police, we changed that from a one-year introductory period back to a six-month, and that's in line with all of the other personnel. Um, and also, leading into that, Section six, Extensions to Introductory Period, we can also extend those additional six months, and that goes for police, fire, and, um, our civilian employees, um, and that's due to marginal performance, they may need it to be extended, um, they may have been hurt on the job, and, you know, the supervisor didn't have enough time to amply, um, watch their job performance, so they're, they're going to extend that, or, um, maybe there just wasn't, uh, additional training as warranted for them to keep going forward. Chapter six, Job Classification Plan and Compensation, Section two, Job Descriptions, basically what we added in there is just that we have the exclusive right to alter job descriptions to meet the needs of our citizens for service demands, number one, technology changes, and then duty changes may take place as well. Section ten, Overtime, Non-Exempt Employees, um, we had a few issues, some of the supervisors wanted us to make sure that we really put that in there because employees can't just go work overtime, we have budgetary constraints, so they, they always have to have approval, it can't be, I have a project, it's got to get done, the supervisor's got to make sure that we have that budgeted for. And then longevity, of course, we're proposing the increase from three to five, uh, fi- three to five dollars during the budget process. For those that weren't here, uh, during the compensation study, we were behind the market on that, so we're getting us back in the market with that.
Ms. Cantrell, can I?
Sure.
I'm sorry for interrupting you, but may, can I ask a quick question? Is, is it the intention that the employee handbook will be reviewed annually, and that's why you're putting the dollar amount in there? Because I think that's a number that could change, and I, is that making you have to changing it, and is it okay, because you plan on reviewing it annually?
I do plan to review it annually.
Okay, thank you.
And then Chapter seven, uh, Performance Evaluations, Section one, Employee Performance Evaluations, that's always been in there, but we really define that for employees, so they know what to expect when they hire on, they get an evaluation at three months, let them know how they're doing, they get one again at six months, and then they get one annually, um, on their, uh, anniversary date, uh, after that point, so we just want to make sure that they know what, what their expectations should be from us as an employer. And then Chapter eight, Attendance and Leave Benefits, Section one, Work Hours, this, um, we pulled out for, from FLSA for our police because they do work a different work week than us. Um, overtime isn't required for law enforcement until after eighty-six hours during a fourteen-day work, work period, and then FLSA states for, uh, fire that it's when it exceeds a hundred and six hours in a fourteen-day work period, then overtime applies, so we define that for our employees. And then Chapter eight, Attendance and Leave, Section two, Holidays, of course, we added the floating holiday, and that will be effective fiscal year twenty-two. Section three, Vacation Leave, Leave Accrual, Leave Accrual Tables for Employees and Firefighters, just to kind of give them an example of what that looks like, and, um, Military Leave, Call to Duty, this has to do with, um, our people that are called back to service, and we just wanted to make sure that they understand that they have fifteen days of paid leave if they are called back, if they do have accrued, uh, vacation and sick time, um, accrued after, beyond, and they have to stay beyond those fifteen days, and they can use that as well. And then, and Clement Weather, we really didn't have that addressed, of course, the city offices always remain open, we are very proud of that, we, um, are always going to offer our services during extraordinary circumstances, but sometimes we do have to close. And so we kind of wanted to give employees an idea of what to, what to expect. Um, when the city manager does determine that certain offices are going to be closed, then the affected personnel are granted leave, however, if we say no, it's everybody's got to get here, but somebody may have, uh, fear for their life or property, um, they can let their supervisor know that they don't feel safe and take a vacation day for that particular day. Employee Conduct.
Real quick.
Yes.
Quick question, if, if you say that you can take your vacation day, if they have no, no time related to sleep without pay, then? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, and Section three, Solicit- Solicitation, oh, I'm sorry, Chapter nine, Employee Conduct and Work Rules, Section three, Solicitations and Acceptance of Gifts Prohibited, um, basically, that's always been in there, but we, it's now in line with the charter, we put that fifty-dollar amount in there, and then if they are presented with an appreciation gift, they have to let their supervisor and HR and the city manager know. And Chapter ten, Discipline Appeals and Grievances, Section nine, Appeals of Disciplinary Action, uh, basically, the one thing that we pointed out in there is that directors, uh, director level and above don't, don't have any right to appeal, um, that stops at the city manager, so this includes disciplinary action and termination. Chapter twelve, Personnel Records, Confidentiality of Medical Information, federal law requires that we keep this information separate from the regular personnel files, that's the way we've always done it, but we just wanted to define that in the handbook, and just to make employees feel more comfortable that, the FMLA paperwork that they bring to us, workers' comp releases, those kinds of things aren't going to be for anybody else's eyes except for HR. Chapter thirteen, Employee Benefits, Section one, Medical Insurance, basically, these are all, these are both federal mandates, too, that needed to be included in the handbook, uh, full-time employees, used to be a forty-hour week to provide full hundred percent coverage for medical, now that looks like thirty hours a week, and then also, benefits used to kick in ninety days first of the month, now we're, that's federally mandated, too, that it has to be sixty days, less than that timeframe, so it's now at sixty days first of the month, except for your department, uh, directors and city manager, when they come on, they, their, uh, medical insurance starts the first of the month after they hired. And then Chapter fourteen, Travel Policy, Authorization Required, we added elected officials to this part, and the reason that we put the city secretary will verify the funds is because she's, of course, in charge of your bu- budgets, so when you submit your travel, uh, advancement expenses, uh, and we'll look that over and sign off on that and say, yes, we've got the funds available. Section five, Personal Credit Cards, of course, we have city credit cards, so we want the employees to use those first and foremost when traveling, um, however, we do recognize that sometimes there's emergencies, and so we added it back in the policy that you can use your personal card, we will reimburse you with the appropriate receipts, just make sure that it's an emergency or unanticipated. And then Chapter fourteen, Travel Policy, we really used to section out and define how much you're going to get for this on a per diem, well, we just took that back like we do for our mileage, and we're going to go with the IRS regulations. So you'll be, uh, paid in accordance with those on your leave. Right now, the, um, tips for per diem for in-state travel overnight for IRS is sixty-six dollars. I did not put that in the policy because, as you know, that changes, so we're just going to say as applicable, whatever IRS is paying at that time, and same for mills out of state, um, we're going to follow IRS guidelines, and they, they utilize a high-low substantiation method, because sometimes when you travel out of state, you may go somewhere, it's a lot cheaper than it is in Texas, or it's either going to be a lot higher, so we'll utilize, utilize that, and of course, actual receipts to pay those. And then Chapter fifteen, City Property Vehicle and Equipment Use, Take Home Vehicles, we really wanted to hit this home, this probably should be a no-brainer, but, you know, some people may think, oh, God, I've got to drive home, I'm going to stop and pick up a twelve-pack, well, no, not in a city vehicle, you're not. And then they might think, oh, well, it's, my kid's just around the corner, I'm just going to pick him up. No, you're not. We can't have anybody that's not on official duties because, number one, TML is not going to cover that pas- that passenger, and number two, it's a huge liability for us, so we're really going to hit that home for new employees especially, if you have a take-home vehicle, it's you and you only in that vehicle. Chapter sixteen, Electronic Communications and Systems Access Use, Section one, electro- what I just said, uh, sorry, filtering, um, we just want to let employees know that, you know, we don't, we do filter here, and we don't want them viewing or sending or having access to inappropriate information at the workplace, so we're just letting them know that. Section two, Social Media, basically, this has to do, you know, and a lot of people will say, you know, well, I have my first-minute right of speech and all of that, and, but this really speaks to the fact that it doesn't matter if you're on or off duty, what you do on social media matters, and it really cannot negatively impact or violate city policy. They have the right to speak out as private citizens, but when it comes to that, of matters of public concern, they have to do it in such a way that it doesn't disrupt our operations, and it doesn't, um, it, it has to be in line with the mission of the city, so can't fa- look, look, look at that and not be favorable to the city, so we kind of hit that home. And then, of course, that the use of city's internet and privilege, and city employees must be responsible and ethically use that. And then Chapter seventeen, Alcohol and Drug Abuse, the only thing I'm going to talk about here is the Section two, Drug and Alcohol, Drug and Alcohol Policy for our DOT employees, and that's your employees that have CDLs and drive those vehicles, that's actually, uh, required by the U.S. Department of, uh, Public Safety and the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration, that when they do, you have, that's a mouthful, uh, you're required to test your employees, and we want to let them know when that testing is going to happen, it's going to happen for pre- pre-employment, post-accidents, um, if, if, if the, our driver, it's their responsibility and they receive a ticket, that they'll be tested, um, if there's a fatality, it doesn't matter if it's their fault or not, they'll be tested, and then, of course, if we have reasonable suspicion, and then we'll do random tests as well on them. Chapter eighteen, Miscellaneous Provisions, last, last chapter, Section four breaks, we added, uh, lactation breaks, of course, if we have, uh, a mother who's breastfeeding and she doesn't have the privacy of her own office, we make sure that we provide a private spot for her to go to, 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 um, have that break, so we've added that in there. And then Section five, Telephone Usage, basically just has to do with, as we're all deemed essential employees, so we have to have a phone number, even if the, the employee doesn't have a city phone, we have to have an after-an-hours number to get ahold of you, because if we have to come back in, we're, we're just letting them know, you're not going to be reimbursed for that, but that's part of your duties as an employee, that we miss, we, we must be able to reach you to, in order to bring you back to take care of our citizens. And then Section eight, Tobacco Use, really want to hit home that we are a smoke-free, um, workplace, and this is going to include, but not limited to cigarettes, e-cigarettes, vaping devices, pipes, cigars, snuff, chewing tobacco, all of it, all of it's prohibited, of course, in city buildings, and you can't, um, partake of that within twenty-five feet of any entrance that the public utilizes or employees utilize, and it's also going to be mandated that it's prohibited in all city vehicles and garages. And then Section ten, the last thing was the dress appearance and uniforms, we just really wanted to clear, uh, clear, uh, clearly defend, define the city, um, expectations here, and that's basically your no-brainer, but some of it gets a little grayer for people, so we don't want you to wear stuff that promotes tobacco or beer or inappropriate material or wears clothes that are tattered, and I got reamed after we put this out, and they were like, what do you mean, no jeans and tennis shoes? And I said, oh- And I said, okay, everybody calm down. It's different for different departments. I mean, because we've got people that are on their feet all day that have to wear tennis shoes, so I'll do a little education on that for the employees. But that's it in a nutshell, and I'll take any questions you have at this time.
Councilmember Rogers?
Well, for you for this, because I know it was one of my projects I gave you a year ago, and you did a fabulous job. I first was going to ask you to pull it because this packet was very large, and I wasn't able to read all of this. But since it's the second reading, I can bring you back more questions next time.
Yes, you can.
So I'm going to leave it there. And the other, one of my first questions were, the mayor kind of asked that, is this going to be printed, or is there going to get this digitally?
It'll be printed. Some will get it digitally, but we'll print it for our field guys that don't have access to computers.
At least I'd ask, as you were talking about the numbers changing. But, I mean, we just got done changing the holiday thing, and that might be something that changes each year, so I didn't want to print a hundred of them and toss all those and print some more.
Usually, when we have an update like that, we'll print the update, provide it to the employees, and they sign off on that update. We don't print the whole document again. But this one will be because it's completely revamped.
Oh, and it looks fabulous, but I'll have more questions next time.
Okay.
Excellent.
I'll be ready.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
I want to echo her remarks. Really good job. I appreciated the memo especially. The, a couple of questions on the reasonable suspicion on chapter seventeen. Do we provide training to supervisors what to look for in reasonable suspicion?
Yeah, we would bring in probably our officers on that, officer Navy, because they are trained on that. Give them the download of what's happening and ask for their advice. But yes, that's a good idea. We can provide training for that.
And on the telephone usage, should we not include, I guess this is for the city manager more than anything, include our restriction on driving or using a cellphone while driving? Should we not have that also in our?
It's in there.
Is it?
Yes, sir.
Then I withdraw that comment.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Maybe I missed it somewhere, because it is a big document. Does the city have a Employee Assistance Program?
We do.
One of the things I saw was it said that they're going to read it, and it's one hundred and sixty-nine pages and sign that they read it. Are you going to do some sort of an orientation, like, you know?
Yes, I'm doing a-
Are you going to put them in a dark room and not let them out till they can answer twenty questions?
My education for them is going to be a lot longer than thirty slides. It'll be a presentation with PowerPoints and everything to go over all the changes. Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. I just don't want to set ourselves up for, I just signed it, and I didn't really read it, and I didn't really know. But you've more than got that covered, so. Okay, council, any other questions for Ms. Cantrell?
Y'all are easy on me tonight.
All right. Does that mean someone's wanting to make a motion?
Move to approve first reading.
I have a motion to approve. Can I ask a clarifying question? Well, I'm going to. It's the way that it's written, it says to put on the consent agenda. Are you, is that included in your motion, knowing that if someone has questions, they can pull it off consent? Is that the intention of your motion?
I would prefer it not be on the consent agenda, so I'll modify my motion if need be to say it be put on the regular agenda.
Okay. So I have a motion from Mayor Protem Nelson to approve with it being on the regular agenda, and Councilmember Rogers, is your second still the same? All right. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jackson?
Just a comment. And I was listening to about it's going to be reviewed annually, and in light of the fact that we do have a new federal holiday, I hope that maybe we'll consider that in the revised version next year. I just want to make note and remind people that we do have that, and that doesn't mean we have to do it, but most people are, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Crouch?
No, I was just going to vote.
Oh, okay. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Excellent job, Ms. Cantrell. Really good job, and to you and all the team that supported you. All right, council, we have two items left. Item, we're at item thirteen G. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash ten of the City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one in accordance with the existing statutory requirements appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A, repealing all prior ordinances and actions in conflict herewith, establishing an effective date, and move to include on the July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one City Council Consent Agenda for a second reading, Ms. Waldron.
All right, good evening. So just to reiterate our financial policy, it does require a budget amendment by council if it is affecting a department. These are both separate funds, so it's kind of a little bit different tonight, but we did have a few projects that have come up that required a budget amendment in order to move forward with these projects. The first budget amendment is increasing the expenditures in the designated fund. We did have some of the expenditures for this special funds that we received from Waste Connections that relate to public education activity, and we have an opportunity to use these funds on Main Street to put out recycling and to have a promote and have a recycling program, and so we just needed to add some more funds to that in order to use available fund balance on that. The second one is, and there's two parts, we're increasing revenue because we've received the sponsorship money, and then we're also increasing the expenditure in order to order the additional benches that I talked about in my staff memo. So those are the two amendments. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Waldron. Any questions? Councilmember Rogers, since you are our liaison to the Main Street, I think I just want to confirm that the Main Street Committee is in agreement with these two projects?
Actually, I'm confused on Amendment one, but I thought they were going to be donated, and we had a project. Would you like to know what?
I mean, I've never heard of them being donated, but we actually have the funds for a recycling program.
Rebecca, is my misunderstanding? The wastewater are donating?
The funds for our recycling program come from the Waste Connections contract, a portion-
So this isn't for the trash?
It's a donation from Waste Connections for a recycling program.
Now I understand. So it's a donation coming in. Okay, now I understand. Yes, that's correct. They're donating the trash cans. Is that right?
They're donating the funds, and we're purchasing the trash can.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so these are the funds, right. So this is just-
So explain the programs, that's what they're not understanding. We got the wastewater to wastewater connections.
Right.
To give us the money.
So they put, they put, they put money aside for recycling program. And so we are developing a downtown recycle programs for them to allow us to take those funds and purchase trash and recycling cans.
For Main Street?
Yes, ma'am.
So do you guys understand? They're giving us the funds, we're coming up with a recycle program, and they're giving us the funds to, for us to buy the trash cans.
So as part of our contract, we get about approximately ten thousand dollars from Waste Connections every year. So those funds have been-
Okay, I'm totally confused. Thank you.
So those funds have been being set aside each year. And so this is an opportunity to use some of those funds. It's a, it's a, it's a perfect project for what they're stipulating those funds to be spent on.
So they've given ten thousand dollars a year, and it's been, it's gone into a separate fund and hasn't been been used?
That's right.
Okay.
So we're developing a recycling program. We're developing a recycling program so we can take those funds, and it falls under the usage of those funds to purchase the trash recycling cans.
And that's something that's been happening for a while with the making the donation for the, the projects have just differed from year to year.
We've never used the funds, from my understanding. They've just been growing in that account.
Yeah, the staff report said we've been getting it, and it's been stacking up.
Right. So we're developing a program that falls under that fund category, so Waste Connections will allow us to use the funds for that purchase.
So, Mr. City Manager, I think council would like to know, are there any other funds that we're getting that are just stacking up? Because we-
Right, because that's not the way it was, that's not the way it was explained at the Main Street meeting. The Main Street meeting, my understanding, and I haven't missed any meetings, is that we were looking for trash cans, so we went to Waste Connections looking for a way for donations. No one said they were already donating. That's where my confusion came from. We're just going to use something that's already in a fund. My understanding was that we went and asked them for donations.
So apologies. So the board came up with the idea to ask our waste-
I'm sorry, I, yes, I sit on that board, yes.
Right, to ask our waste provider if they would fund the trash cans. So I went to Tracy to talk about that option, and Tracy said that there may be funds available, and she pulled all of the details on how we get access to those funds, what we're allowed to use those funds are. And so we developed the idea to do the Downtown Recycles Program, which went back to the Main Street Board and said, okay, we may be able to use these Waste Connection funds to do this Downtown Recycles Program.
I get it, I get it. I'm just saying that it was, it wasn't my understanding that the funds were already here.
Okay. I apologize for that.
That was my confusion. I'm sorry, I couldn't explain it better, but that was not the way it was going to be explained at the meeting.
I apologize for that.
So I would like to know from Ms. Waldron, after this is funded, how much money is left in that fund?
I have on here, there's approximately fifty-two thousand available funds, so I think this project is spending twenty, how much was the, about twenty-eight thousand?
Looks like twenty. Okay, so there'd be thirty-two thousand left in that fund that has criteria around the ability to use it. Okay. I just think that that could be beneficial for the Main Street Board. Councilmember Jackson?
I'm just a little confused, too, because over the years with, at least when I served on the Main Street Board, there was money that was dedicated for, that was dedicated towards recycling, and I thought we did programs with the schools and other organizations and took some of the funding. That's been a few years ago, though, so.
We just haven't had a program in the last several years.
But we have had something similar to it in the past. I just wanted to make sure that we were aware of that. I mean, it's, the money was collected, and it was specifically for recycling, and we did programs with the schools and other programs, other organizations in the community, so.
Okay. It was that, are you, I want to make sure that I wasn't cutting you off. Are you done? All right. So on the second project of the benches, Councilmember Rogers, does that make, are you cool with that one? Is Main Street Board supportive of that one as well?
Spending the money they raised, yes.
All right. Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Waldron?
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Peterson?
Second.
A second from Mayor Protem Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes, I would like to make a comment, though. If we have funds for recycling, then why are the trash cans on Main Street already rusted out at the bottom if we had funds somewhere we could have used? I don't understand that. If they were already sitting somewhere, that we, all we had to do is come up with a recycling program, which all it is is an education program that we're going to start, we could have used the funds.